We still got Tonys up too.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I can tell you.
I have to.
Yeah. I'll take it.
Maybe we have a bigger.
I lose my right.
You can ask.
I'm virtual.
Yeah. Five hundred and forty. So. I still live on a farm. I. I write a book. I'm sorry.
Did I steal your chair?
What's that?
Did I steal your chair? I think I just can't get it before. It's usually the back of the. Yeah. But it only do it. You will be what? Okay. All right. Do that. You got my number?
I do.
This meeting is being recorded and or transcribed.
Like, I know it's somewhere.
Give me back.
It's seven o'clock. Good evening. I'm gonna now call the September twenty first, twenty twenty city council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting. I just want to remind everybody that with respect to the COVID pandemic, we're continuing to conduct these city council meetings in accordance with all federal, state, and local guidelines. Tonight's council meeting is being livestreamed. Additionally, the council has provided the public with opportunities to participate in this meeting by submitting comments through the city council's website. Any comments received after being distributed to the council, and though the comments are gonna be distributed, the comments have been distributed to the council, and they will be included in tonight's minutes for the agenda. So, we're gonna start off with a proclamation. It is Gold Star Mother's Day, and we have our Fishers resident George Strapalopoulos here to give the proclamation for Gold Star Mother's Day.
A City of Fishers proclamation. Whereas on June twenty third, nineteen thirty six, the US Congress passed a joint congressional resolution that designated the last Sunday of September as Gold Star Mother's Day. And whereas the history of Gold Star Mothers dates back, dates back to World War One, when it became the custom of military families to hang a service flag near their front window. These flags featured a blue star for each family member actively serving in the US Armed Forces. And the gold star flag first made its appearance when mothers who lost sons in the war sold gold stars over the blue stars. And whereas the City of Fishers recognizes the gold star on a service flag as a symbol of those soldiers who have fallen in the line of duty protecting our freedom, and whereas we honor those members of our community who have lost a son or daughter, making the ultimate sacrifice in service of our country. And whereas on this day, we remember our commitment to Gold Star Mothers and their families who carry on with pride and courage despite suffering this tragic loss. Therefore, Mayor Scott Fadness, City of Fishers, Indiana, does hereby proclaim September the twenty seventh, twenty twenty, as Gold Star Mothers and Family Day. In the City of Fishers and all residents are encouraged to celebrate it. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Thank you, George, for reading the proclamation, and thank you for your service to our country. We're gonna, we don't have any presentations this evening. We're gonna move on to the finance committee report. I'm gonna turn it over to our chairman of the finance committee, John Weingart, to give his finance report.
Thank you, Cecilia. Good evening, everybody. The finance committee has been meeting on numerous occasions regarding our budget for two thousand twenty one. So, some other items, tonight, we present for you for council consideration. We recommend moving forward for approval, item, item nine, which pertains to the budget, item ten, item eleven, item twelve. We've met and discussed through these hours, and we're recommending that the council approve these items this evening. In addition, on some other items, as you may or may not be aware, the City of Fishers has, from Standard and Poor's, have got the highest triple A bond rating due to our fiscally conservative financial management of our city. In addition, not that we've seen the report yet, but we also have received word from our audit firm. We're one of the few cities, I believe, in the entire city that actually gets an audited financial statement. We're gonna receive what's an unqualified opinion. And as many of you may be aware, an all quite unqualified opinion is a clean opinion. Everything has been done in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards. So, very pleased with our accounting function, and you'll get to see our control at work here in a little bit. Lisa Bradford has just done an outstanding job for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. It consists of one item this evening. It's a request to approve the previous meeting minutes from the regular meeting, which was August seventeenth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete.
I'll second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So, we're gonna move on to the regular agenda. This is R zero nine two one two zero C. This is a request to approve an economic development agreement called Maple Dell Development. And this piece of property is located over by Chatham Tap and encompasses the town, near the townhomes at Fishers Point and close to Charleston Crossing. And to talk about this project, we have Megan Baumgartner from the City of Fishers.
Thank you, council, for the record. Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development for the City of Fishers. Today, we have a very exciting economic development project that has been in the works for quite some time. So, I'd like to start by providing a bit of an overview of the area. So, the area for tonight's consideration is the Maple Dell Development. So, this is just west of Chatham Tap in the commercial center along one hundred and sixteenth street. It consists of about ten acres, seventeen total properties, but sixteen total properties that are part of the project for tonight. A few years ago, we extended the nickel plate code and zoning to this area, and so it's currently zoned as a village center. So, we really have seen this as an area for future redevelopment. These are larger lots, so when people were looking for what's the next location for redevelopment in Fishers, this always came up in conversations. Go back to earlier in twenty nineteen, some of the property owners began talking to various development groups about coming together and selling their properties. At that time, there were fourteen different properties that were under contract with closings coming up, and the city, really at that time, we didn't feel that we were ready to say, here's what the development should look like in this area. So, when we were, we had the opportunity to partner with the Hagaman Group to do a land acquisition agreement. So, council may remember, this was done in July of twenty nineteen. The fourteen properties that are shown in yellow were the properties that were included in this land acquisition agreement. The remaining three properties at that time were not interested in selling, so they weren't included in the land acquisition agreement. The way that we had this agreement structured is the city and Hagaman Group had a certain amount of time that we would work together to, to find a development proposal that we all thought was the right fit for this area. So, in January of twenty twenty, demolition starts, and really from January twenty twenty up through June and July of this year, the city met with Hagaman Group and various development groups to figure out what this development should look like. And then in April twenty twenty, earlier this year, an additional home, one one four seven five Maple Drive, the owner agreed to sell that property, and so we did an additional land acquisition agreement. Again, during this whole time, Hagaman Group was working with all of the adjacent property owners. As you can imagine, when people see demolition happening next to their home and next to their neighborhood, there's questions and there's concerns. So, we made sure that there was constant communication between Hagaman Group as the property owners, and then I myself and my team, we were answering questions for, from residents as well. Today, we have the result of many months of working together, again, talking to council members, to neighbors, to neighborhoods, and HOAs for a really exciting development. This is a development project with Hagaman Group, joint venture with J.C. Hart. They are here tonight, and we'll be able to speak to council here in a couple of minutes and share their vision for this project. The total investment is about thirty, is north of thirty million dollars. In one of their slides, I believe, we had a thirty six point two million is the total investment about, but you'll see in the EDA, it's thirty million. A hundred and ninety different units, and the exciting part about this development is we wanted it to have its own unique feel. So, there's actually three different types of buildings and units within this development. So, there's a three-story garden-style unit, which is kind of your traditional-looking multifamily. Then they also have eighteen three-story townhomes, and I have some of the renderings on the next page. And then there's also eight two-story parrot patio townhomes. The one thing that we really wanted them to be cognizant of is along the western side of this development is how do we protect the people's backyards that are budding up to this development? We didn't want people driving into their driveways, headlights going into people's backyards or patios, and so this was a great option that they came up with. There's no garage parking or no podium, kind of traditional downtown garage parking, but they do have covered parking garages for residents in this development. So, three hundred and fifty-two total parking spots between those polling garages, surface, and on-street. The one property that is not included in the development, that the property owner has continued to live in the property, they've been great partners, from what I understand, with the development group is the Macy Property, so it's that far northeast corner of the development. Again, all of the green space that we've asked them to include on the south side of the development is really in consideration of those neighbors. And then the rendering, excuse me, at the bottom, is what they've proposed for the three-story garden-style units. And then finally, we have our agreement terms. So, we have this land acquisition agreement that had a certain amount that was proposed for the city if we had to do that. That land acquisition agreement said that in the event that we came to an agreed project, that we just assign those properties and the land acquisition goes away. So, today, we're asking council to consider a developer-backed bond. So, this development group will purchase the bonds, the city would issue the debt, and then we would pledge a hundred percent of the TIF capture of that development area over twenty-five years. So, the great thing for council is we're issuing the debt, but everything contained within that development is their responsibility, so there's no threat to us. The estimated value of those a hundred and ninety units in that whole development is approximately six point one million. One thing that I will point out to council is that six point one million dollars does not cover their gap. So, council's familiar that we talk a lot about closing the gaps to make a project work. They are out of pocket, some additional funds that kind of push their pro forma a bit more, so I'd like to call attention to that. We're also asking for a waiver of impact fees. Permitting and inspection fees are not being waived as part of this request, and in exchange, the development will annex these properties into the city corporate limits, and they will have to adhere to all city and state codes and procedures. Tom Dickey with Hagaman Group and Todd May from J.C. Hart are here to speak a little bit about the development as well.
Thank you, Megan.
Thanks, Megan. Good evening, council. Thank you for your time. My name is Tom Dickey, for the record. I'm managing director of real estate for the Hagaman Group. And first of all, we're still excited to be here. We appreciate, oh, the over a year and a half that we spent working with the city, not just the mayor's office and Megan, but also met a couple of times with planning staff to really understand what, what special piece of property we have here. As Megan mentioned, we had the opportunity to work with the city in twenty nineteen to buy these properties. So, the Hagaman family has about six million dollars invested in the properties today, and we've spent a lot of time since that, that acquisition to really find a good project that really fits with the neighborhood to the west, but yet is an integral part of the Nickel Plate District. So, I was trying to count today, just to get ready for some comments tonight, and I would suspect we had over probably twenty meetings over the last year or so with, with city and just with the mayor's office, and just trying to really hone in on a vision. And we left here a lot of times with our tail between our legs, saying that we'd missed the mark, and so it, it was a humbling process, but one we're proud of to getting to this result. And, and part of that was actually working with just potential different development partners. Our hope at Hagaman Group was that we would invest money upfront to, to control the property. We would hope that the city wouldn't call us up and say, hey, now we want to buy it from you, and another developer come and develop it, or another investor come along. Our hope was that we would find a good partner, a project the city liked, and then we'd be here tonight, which we are, so we're excited to be here. And that partner, almost from the beginning, we had hoped it would be J.C. Hart, and it's really glad that they're here tonight. Megan mentioned a couple of things I wanted to talk just for a second about. One is that the idea of GAAP and financing for these types of projects, which you're very familiar with, because you've been down the public-private partnership road before. Megan's reference to a GAAP was, we had really said from the beginning that a TIF needed to somehow figure, take out our land price, so we're starting with sort of zero land price, which a lot of projects downtown have started with a zero land price pro forma plus additional TIF on top of that. And we certainly had direction from the mayor's office from the very beginning that that wasn't gonna happen on this project, that need to fit within the confines of just collecting the TIF from this project. And so, that GAAP is our, our investment with just a six percent carry cost, demo cost, environmental cost, all the costs we've incurred is gonna end up being about six point five million. So, we're not there to that zero land basis where we'd hope to be on a project, but we, we still think we're in the area that we can make the project work and, and do great things. And J.C. Hart Construction will also build it, and we hope that there'll be savings that we can find along the way, although if you were to look at costs today, they're escalating, not, not coming down, but we hope that's a possibility. The second thing I wanted to talk about before turning it over to Todd is reaching out to neighbors. We really focused on Charleston Crossing to the, to our west. They are the community that first started calling when they saw demolition and so forth, and so we had a guy on site, Blair Carmasino, had lots of conversations with people who walked over. I had conversations on the phone with folks. I called a couple of people back in May just to give them another update. We sent a letter. We sent a letter to them in February describing what was happening, told them to get back with their board as soon as there was a plan to talk about. We did that once Todd and J.C. Hart was on board. He and I both had a Zoom call with the board, a Zoom call, follow-up call with the president. And then, you know, this is probably my fault. We didn't engage the townhome community to the west, to the east of us as quickly, just thinking that it was the same density as the project we're proposing and there was a woods in between it. So we just weren't as focused as much as we were to the west. And then once we got David, Councilor George, connected us with the president of that organization, and we just have had some difficulty over the last five weeks connecting, but we are now connected and talking with that HOA on the 29th of this month. Last comment is, and Megan mentioned this, was it's zoned village center, which is exactly the density we're proposing for that. So we think it's a great fit from a zoning perspective. So that's the Hagaman Group sort of involvement. And we, but we will just become an investor once this project is signed on and J.C. Hart will bring its experience and credibility and character to the project and deliver a great project. So with that, I want to introduce Todd May from J.C. Hart.
Good evening, council. For the record, Todd May, Vice President Development, J.C. Hart Company, office is at 805 City Center Drive. Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Megan. That was an excellent overview of our project. So I'm going to try very hard not to be redundant. Respect everyone's time. We are very excited about this project. For those of you that are not familiar with J.C. Hart Company, we are a local company, been in business for 44 years. Do have several properties here in Fishers. Back in 2008, 2009, we developed District Saxony with Republic Development. In 2014, we developed the Hamilton, which is right next door to Hamilton proper. And then in 2016, we developed the Beachside at Saxony, which sits on Lake Saxony or Saxony Lake. And then we actually purchased, we did not build or develop, we purchased. I think it's the only property we've ever bought, but it was right next door, flats at Switch. So very excited to be owners of that project as well. So do have quite a bit of experience here in Fishers. The community itself, what we were trying to do, we were inspired by the really neat urban villages that you see just outside of urban cores throughout the country that have those neat little surprising residential pockets. So we wanted to bring something very traditional, rich-like in architecture that had a lot of those urban village qualities. Just walk through the site plan just real quickly as Megan overviewed. We have introduced three different product types, the traditional garden, the townhome and the paired homes concept. That you do see a very simple street network that will have some parallel parking, but will have trees. That's not the official landscape plan, but it's just to approximate what it will look like. But the trees on each side of the road with the parallel parking, over time, will create a really neat tree canopy, a very pedestrian-friendly street network. We've tried to front a lot of the buildings up to the street. And as you can see, we've hid a lot of that parking back behind the building. So traditionally, you think of an apartment complex and you think of driving through a sea of parking. And that's not what you have here. It's a very residential village-like feel. We do have several green spaces. We can see the main green space with, behind the pool there. Across that is the clubhouse, where we'd like to have like a, just a small cafe seating outdoors in the seasons that permit that. There at the south end, you do have some more green space. Those little squares there, it's kind of hard to see. But that is a concept that we'd like to bring with some raised gardens that people can grow their own vegetables and spices and so forth. And then just some other little park area there to create some more buffer. As Megan mentioned, one of the things from the very onset that we were trying to be very sensitive to were the neighbors there to the west, Charleston Crossing. So the buildings that you see there are in similar context and scale to the backs of those homes. There are quite a bit of mature trees there. We love trees as well, so we try to save them. Our residents love trees, so we'll do our best to save those. And then we will supplement that. I can tell you from experience, for instance, on the Hamilton proper project, I think I was in everybody's kitchen and living room and we had our architect and landscape architect out there with stakes to try to find the ideal location for pine trees and trees and shrubbery and so forth. And we would offer to do the same thing here, of course. But the idea here was to have a project that appealed to both millennials and to empty nesters. Empty nesters continue to be the fastest-growing segment of our business. We've done a lot of different things here within this neighborhood to do that. One of the biggest things for the townhomes and the paired homes, they're our first-floor masters. There are a lot of things, believe it or not, that millennials and empty nesters have in common, pedestrian-friendly, the parks, the clubhouse that will be fully amenitized. It will be really a real-class project that you would expect in this location. 190 units. As mentioned, 18 of those are the townhomes, eight would be the paired patio homes. The rent there is about $1.48, which puts that right around where the depot would be, maybe a little, a little less, and then a little less than the mark, which is the newest property. With that, I can answer hopefully your questions. And together with Tom and I, hopefully, we can answer all your questions tonight. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve R. 092120C?
Still moved.
Motion by Pete, second?
I'll second.
Second by John.
Is the, is the 6.1 the maximum? It's not, did I miss it, Megan? I don't see the 6.1 in the documents.
So the financial summary that Baker Tilly has put together, so Baker Tilly, sorry. They are, they're doing their financial summary right now. They have put together, based off of the percentage of their capture, the years, and then the analysis from it, and it's come back right at 6.1. So there would never be anything more than 100% TIF capture. We could be off by, you know, $10,000, $15,000. But that number is something that's agreed upon in the economic development agreement.
So the maximum is 6.1? They can't come back and say, we need more?
We all, at the, at the time of closing, say this is the agreed-upon financial summary.
And that'll be in the writing in the document?
I believe it's in there.
Now, the TIF repayment, what happens if we repay the TIF at 23 years?
So they're, who's saying that? Oh, I'll let you go for it. Yeah, I'll let one of you speak to how you would plan to repay.
Yeah, so first of all, we understand that max is 6.1. That's, we define that as a gap. So if, if at the end of day, Baker Tilly were to project, there could be 6.2 million proceeds, then the bond documents, which will be done over the next 90 days, would reflect a $6.1 million bond issue. So that's our understanding. And then if the bonds are just paid off earlier, they're just, I would suspect the...
The assessed value would return to the tax rolls.
So the TIF would come off?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So once, yeah, there's, there'll be so many, you know, it'll be 23 years of capture, so there's 46 bond coupons. And if they're paid off, they're paid off. And if that's early, it's early.
If anything, if for some reason these projected higher, since they're buying their own bonds, all it really does is give them a level of comfort that they're going to be able to pay their debt.
Right, but in 25 years, you never know.
You never know, yeah.
Because my experience, 25, they get paid off before 25.
That's the hope. Yeah, then we get the assessed value back sooner. And again, we'll have in the bond documents, that 6.1 million would be the maximum for the project that closing.
And then on page six, section 4.2 fee waivers, a general, it does not say that we are not waiving the other fees. So that's not in the document. So if we make a motion to approve this, this document is not what we should be approving.
We're not waiving them.
I believe it just said the waiver of impact fees.
No, it's, everything's waived, everything. It's the same paragraph, building permit fees, everything is waived.
Okay.
Okay.
Then that was an oversight.
And then to follow that up, as the mayor know, we've discussed many times, I have a problem with the impact fees. We're giving the impact fees back to the big boy. And the little guy, which this city is entrepreneurial, the little guy has to pay his impact fees. It doesn't make sense to me as an entrepreneur, as a little guy, I got to pay it. But sorry to call you out, Tom, but the big guy gets zero. And the other concern I have on that, the northeast quadrant, we have over 3,000 lots platted and going on three county roads, and it's ridiculous. And I'm the one that takes the brunt of it because that's my district. I'm the one that's got to listen to it every day. You drive down 136 and the mayor now knows, you come to a concrete truck and you got to get off the road. The concrete truck will come over the middle line. And for my generation, average 72-years-old, that is scary and dangerous, along with the bicycles that we now allow to ride on 136. So I personally have a problem with impact fees being waived. We need the money inside the city for our parks and for our roads. So I have a problem with any fees being waived. That's what we bring in from developers to help keep our real estate taxes down. Personal opinion, thank you.
So David asked a question of whether the council would entertain waiting another month. I know we have a motion on the table, but no.
I would like to wait another month. I feel like some of the details aren't, I've pored through this document and I'm not really reflecting in the document what has been communicated tonight. So I know I feel like I need more information and more detail. I'd also like a little bit more of the kind of rationale too. Continue, I do have one more question about the actual proposal.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted some clarification. I wanted to be crystal clear. All the units are rental units, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
What, what impact does this have on your project if it was delayed another month to get a couple more details figured out with the residents there in the neighborhood?
Yeah, I exchanged texts with Councilman George before the meeting and just told him the same thing I'll tell you, which is it's at the beginning of the project. There are no land acquisition deadlines. We don't have to close on property in 15 days that we want this certainty for. So there is nothing, we can't stand here and tell you that the project's in jeopardy if it's pushed a month. But as developers, we like to have certainty in our world and we're engaging, J.C. Hart is engaging, you know, engineers and so forth. So we were hoping to be approved tonight. But if it's the will of the council that it's been voted on in October, I can't stand here and tell you that that's, the project's in jeopardy.
Brad?
I guess from my perspective, and David, maybe you can give me some clarity here. And I agree with Brad, so we need to correct the document so that it's only impact fees and not the other fees waived. And I'm sure Megan took note of that. David, I'm trying to figure out what 30 days does. I mean, it falls within the nickel plate standard. It's, it was already done for high density. The project economic agreement is laid out. We go talk to the condo association, is there something radically that's going to change with them that obviously is going to make this project not a good project? So I'm just trying to figure out what the delay buys us from the perspective of going to see it again, when I believe we've got an outstanding product here. I think it's a very new product, which I think is terrific to be downtown. It's adding the density where we want density. I've got two of the, I've got a premier developer in Hagaman. And then having lived in the J.C. Hart apartment over at the Hamilton, I can't speak more highly about a group that I want to build this thing. So I'm not really sure what the delay buys us, other than it just adds time.
I met with them August 4th. They reached out to me. The only thing I asked was meet with both neighbors, east and west. They were able to get the west side done. The east took a little bit of a delay on both sides. That's all I'm asking, is to meet with both neighbors. I think it's just out of respect to the person that's going to live right next to it. That's all I'm asking for. These guys are great. It's a perfect development team. We know that they can execute. My only point is, they just need to meet with the neighbors so that we know that they hear about it before something moves forward.
And another point, since this is a rattle, and I know we've done it at some other projects, Mayor, if they sell the thing, why aren't we getting a percentage back? They're going to be making a profit if they sell it. Why can't we put in there, if they sell it within 25 years, we get a percentage to recover our 6.1 million?
Well, I think one thing is the risk that they're taking on. And they're also on the hook to buy the bonds. So they're, I mean, they are paying the bonds over the next 25 years. I don't know if you guys want to talk about your gap?
That would have been my comment on just risk allocation. I mean, I'm certainly familiar with those provisions where the city share, you know, whatever city, whether it's Fishers or Knollsville, whoever shares in the profit. But in my experience, that's where there's no risk on the developer as to the TIF. The city's putting its sales, or its income tax or whatever it is behind the bonds. I mean, here, if the project fails and you can't pay the taxes, the bonds don't get paid, that just really, as developers, investors, we're doubling down on both the products will be successful and the taxes will get paid. So that would, that would be my response. I think that's why it's not typical in provisions where there's developer-backed bonds.
And the ones that we have done that, Brad, we've been the ones backing the debt.
Tom, when would the bonds be ready to fund?
When we're ready to break ground. So the bonds would be issued either the same day or within a few days of us, of J.C. Hart, Hagaman, JV closing on a construction loan.
And when, give me a timeframe.
Spring, late spring, '20, '21. Yeah, so late spring, 2021.
Selena, do you have a question?
Yeah, as for me, when I look at this parcel of land, one of the things I think that we need within our community is smaller homes. We have, we've put in a lot of rental product here recently. And I look at this, I'm looking, I agree, I'm hearing the same thing that you are hearing from whether it be empty nesters to young families. But a lot of the ones that I'm talking to, I want to stay in Fishers, but I can't because we don't have that smaller housing stock that they can purchase. My neighbors across the street, they're on Madden Drive. They, they would prefer that this be homeowners rather than rentals. We just believe, a lot of them believe that as homeowners, that there would be a greater pride within the community. I've talked to the trustees. The trustees are telling me that with all the rental product being put in, that they're seeing an increase. I would like to see more homeownership taken. And when I look at this parcel of land, I look at, why can't we put, I love those duplexes. And I would love to see the area developed in some type of duplex or something where we can put in, you know, where those younger families and seniors can go that need that smaller housing product. So for me, right now, I can tell you I'm a no on this project because I would rather see a smaller homeownership that I think could fit there as opposed to a rental project.
Again, so I'm not really sure what the delay buys us. I think it's a terrific project. I'm not going to be in favor of delaying this because I think they've already got a meeting on the books to meet with the homeowners to the other side. Again, we're going to work just as well as you've worked with the other folks. Not really going to change anything for me, other than, you know, just adds time to this and brings it back again. With no real clear-cut answer is what the time does. So I'm not going to be in favor of delaying.
Point of order, ma, uh, councillor? With a motion on the table, can you make a motion to table?
Yeah, typically, this council is allowed a motion to table to proceed. And it received a second, so we can go ahead and, pending further discussion on that motion, call for a vote on David's motion to delay the project by 30 days. Depending on that outcome of the vote, then we can come back and return to the full motion.
Thank you.
What, what about with respect to just the document itself, like to make sure that it's...
Let's have the motion on, subject to any of the other council members' thoughts on the delay, the request by David. David made a motion to delay the project 30 days or to delay consideration. Councilwoman Vare seconded that motion. Let's go ahead and call a vote on that motion and then see where that stands.
Okay, all those in favor to delay a month, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call vote on that? Clerk, if we can get a roll call.
Jocelyn Vare? I voted aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
John Weingart?
Nay.
David George?
Aye.
Cecilia Kobel?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
No.
Selena Stoller? Brad DeRaimer?
Aye.
Okay, so that, uh, David's motion passes, so now we've got to determine the, the actual content, Chris, now?
I'll send out this item and we'll be tabled for 30 days.
Okay, okay, perfect, all right. Thank you, okay, so we'll move on. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to, uh, item number eight on the agenda, R092120D. This is a request to approve the First Amendment to an Economic Development Agreement with the Nickel Plate Hotel. It is a boutique hotel, 110 units in the Nickel Plate District, and we have Megan Baumgartner, that's gonna talk about this project.
Thank you, Council. Again, for the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development. Um, last year, we brought forth the Nickel Plate Hotel project, which is the boutique hotel, um, that goes along with the First Internet Bank, new corporate headquarters, um, and the multifamily project on the north side of 116th Street. As I'm sure many of you can imagine, nobody, uh, forecasted COVID and the impact that it would then have on the tourism industry. So they have asked for an extension of their closing date, which was originally going to be December of this year, um, to June of 2022. This gives them 18 months to finalize their plans, get through this pandemic, and finalize, um, their financing terms. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do I have a motion to approve R092120D?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. Uh, now I'm gonna open up for any discussion or comments, questions for the project.
Megan, I have a question about, um, the delay. What are the effects of the delay? They're delaying the closing by 18 months?
So the closing of the financing and the construction loan. So that will push the construction term then by 18 months as well. So they were anticipating an 18-month construction timeframe, so it would be up to 18 months after the June 2022 start.
So does that, what does that mean for, like, the construction efforts? And it's, does it, it's prolonged by an additional 18 months?
I would say it actually benefits in some regard. Um, the, there's actually cost savings that are associated with being able to build the tunnel for, uh, the Nickel Plate Trail while that hotel isn't there. We're able to peel back the, the dirt and build it independently from having to build it right alongside the wall of the hotel. So that simultaneous construction, there's actually some benefit for the city to delay the start of that construction. And frankly, anyone who's been downtown realizes there's an awful lot going on right now in one little space. So from our perspective, given the, the economic outlook for the time being, there's some, there is some upside to us from a construction standpoint. Now, that does mean that there'll be more construction for a longer period of time, but from a congestion standpoint, it certainly alleviates some issues.
And we've confirmed with the team doing the Nickel Plate Tunnel because originally the Economic Development Agreement anticipated some of their construction and foundation work being tied into the tunnel, and that's not gonna, to the mayor's point, that won't impact any of the work that we have to do for the tunnel.
Thank you.
Any more questions? No? Okay. Now I'm gonna go ahead and...
Call the vote. We have a vote on Resolution R092120D. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passed. Okay, we're moving on to the budget and finance portion of our, uh, meeting. So items nine, 10, and 11 are on tonight's agenda. They affect the city's 2021 budget, and the City Finance Committee has been working very diligently with the mayor, the staff, and the staff of this 21, 2021 budget in the ninth council of all of the tertiary and rule of the statutory required public hearings, and I'm gonna turn it over to the House for clarification, and there will be an open public hearing right now.
Thank you, Council President Kobel, and, uh, thank you to the rest of the council for your consideration of the 2021 fiscal year's budget. This is actually my, uh, 15th year of presenting budgets or being involved in the budgets here in the city of Fishers. I can tell you that each and every one of them have been different, uh, but none quite as different as this year's. Uh, and I have to, tonight you'll see a common theme throughout the conversation of this budget, um, that I'm so proud of Lisa Bradford and our Controller's Office, as well as our entire leadership team. We've, uh, dealt with some unprecedented challenges this year from an operational standpoint, and, uh, we've, we've done so, and our team has done so, uh, making swift decisions on unlimited information, uh, trying to do what was in the best interest of our community at all times, and, uh, really trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. And I think you will find that it has left us in good hands with a lot of opportunity moving forward. And, uh, we've just gotten some recent information as late as this, last week, that I think will paint a rosier picture than perhaps what we were looking at, uh, even, uh, a week ago. So this has been a wild roller coaster ride when it comes to the budget, um, but I think we're, we're in a very sound financial place. To start off with, I just wanna talk a little bit about the process that we've gone through here with the budgets, that, um, no one comes to this conversation today thinking that this is the first conversation around our council and around this budget. And I wanna talk a little bit about just the process that we undergo. Prior to June, uh, there's a lot of activity that happens within our own organization, uh, between myself and the controller and, and our staff, talking about what our expectations are, and, uh, what we think our revenue assumptions are going to be, what we think our expenditures are going to be, and just a general tone or conversation. And most of the department heads can tell you, you know, you leave that meeting, you either know it's gonna be a good year or a bad year, and that's about all you know. Uh, but we get more into the details as we move forward. But in June 2020, we had, um, a brief notifying Citizens of Budget Website and Public Meetings published, uh, in Think Fishers in the Third Quarter Magazine. In July 15th of 2000, or 2020, discussion of debt and debt strategy in correlation with Geis Park and State Road 37, uh, at the Finance Committee meeting. On August 12th of 2020, we had a discussion of the draft fiscal plan and anticipated dates to receive certified local income tax amounts, which we're gonna circle back to here in a minute, because this is a, this is a big component of the budget. On August 2020, on the website, we published our budget. September 9th, 2020, we had, uh, the budget advertised and in the Gateway System. September 10th, 2020, excuse me, 2020, in-depth discussion on departmental budgets. So this is where Lisa provided a rundown of all departmental budgets, uh, to the Finance Committee. We blasted that information out to 3,000 of our, uh, residents who are on our listserv, as well as, uh, Facebook posts, and then we followed up again with more social media on September 14th. We had in-depth discussions of the 2021 fiscal plan again, uh, with our financial consultant September 16th. And then on September 17th, I held a media briefing for any, uh, the media that would like to come in and learn in more depth or in more detail about what our budget was going to be presented. Uh, and then finally, uh, September 21st, 2020, a post on Nextdoor regarding the Fisher City Council meeting to make them aware of tonight's meeting. All this was a buildup or a culmination of lots of different discussions with various stakeholders, working through the budget to get to the point where we are today. What is unusual about, uh, the budget that I'm gonna be presenting tonight is what has occurred since September 17th, or actually September 16th, uh, till today, and that is regarding local option income taxes and the projections that we were forecasting versus what they actually came in, and we're gonna, we're gonna touch on that in a second. But if we take a step back and we talk about how we've adjusted as an organization, as a municipality, to the, the context for which we find ourselves in, there were some pretty extraordinary measures that happened in the first quarter and second quarter of this year that I want you guys to be aware of. Uh, and first and foremost, recognizing the fact that our businesses were, uh, in jeopardy. Uh, we didn't know how long the, the, um, the, the close down, so to speak, would be taking place. We didn't know the impact on our businesses, real estate, property taxes, income taxes. We started taking some proactive measures within the internal workings of our organization. A couple of those were we, we froze all travel and training budgets, and we set aside those appropriations that equaled $380,000. The Parks Department, the, given the fact that we were unable to host a lot of our large events, we set aside $317,000. We looked at open job positions and ultimately, uh, decided not backfilling different positions, saved about $400,000, or excuse me, part-time and summer, uh, reductions, uh, alluded to about $400,000. And then finally, we've removed seven positions from the 2021 budget, resulting in the savings of $535,000. This adds up to roughly $1.2 million in cost savings. That money was set aside, and the reason we did that is we wanted to build up our cash reserves going into what was an unknown 2022, 2023. Some of that conversation comes back to the Health Department discussion. When we came to the City Council, uh, in the, in the early onslaught of the pandemic and said, "We wanna be able to provide services to our residents at a local level, and particularly around testing." And so if you recall, we asked the council for an additional appropriation of our cash reserves of $2 million. That $2 million was above our, uh, cash reserve policies. So it wasn't that you were dipping below what you would be required to have as cash on hand, but it was the surplus, uh, funding that we thought would be advisable to use and deploy in order to ensure we could provide those services to our residents. The chart that's up here tonight and why it's relevant to the conversation as we move forward financially is since that time, we had had an optimistic hope, if you will, that the federal government would provide resources and support to, uh, localities around qualified expenses such as testing, such as personal protective equipment, things of that nature. And, uh, that has come to fruition. The city of Fishers, if you recall, has an allocation from the CARES Act of approximately $3 million. That $3 million can only be reimbursed to the city if we have qualified expenses. We feel very confident that the vast majority of that $2 million that we set aside for these types of expenses will actually be reimbursed by the, um, state of Indiana. In fact, the total requested to date is, uh, roughly a million five, and, uh, we've received a, a good portion of that to date, if not all of it, at least if, uh, about a million of it, uh, and the rest is, uh, should be on its way imminently. So we do feel as though the, the testing that you see out back, uh, and to date, we've tested about 12,000 residents, and, uh, we've taken 4,200 calls on our hotline around COVID. Those expenses, we feel very confident that we'll be able to get reimbursed by the federal government, and therefore that cash comes back to our cash reserves, so it puts us in a stronger cash position. All of these things were very, very important, um, leading into, uh, what we thought was gonna be a very difficult 2021 budgeting process. So here you can see the total amount, $2 million taken out. We believe 1.7 million of that will go back as reimbursed, qualified reimbursable expenses, uh, from the federal government. Some of these actions that we've taken and just the overall fiscal discipline of the city council over the years has, uh, allowed us to maintain a triple A bond rating. To be honest and completely candid with all of you, when Lisa started working on our most recent transportation bond and getting it affirmed or rated, if you will, uh, there were some genuine concerns in this environment, in this economy, whether or not Standard and Poor's would reaffirm our triple A bond rating. And, um, I'll just read a couple quotes here that I thought were important. This came from S&amp;P's ra- rating report where they did reaffirm us triple A. "The city's economic vitality sounded forward, thinking fiscal practices and very strong reserves should enable Fishers to retain a strong credit profile." Quote, "Management continues to implement innovative governing ideas that safeguard Fishers' ability to provide forward-looking services, both internally and for residents." And finally, "Very strong management with strong financial policies and practices under our S&amp;P Financial Management Assessment, FMA methodology." I have to thank John Weingart, uh, the Chair of the Finance Committee, and all those on the Finance Committee for continuing to, you know, pay due diligence, be in those audit conversations, uh, continue to adhere to the policies that we passed as a, a governing body many years ago to ensure that we can continue to provide sound financial, um, path for, for our community. So just a high-level overview of the budget, and for anyone that would want to go into more detail, in-depth detail of detailed, uh, department budgets, you can find that on our website. So I encourage anyone that would wanna go out and, uh, review those, they can, they are posted online. But our 2021 proposed operating cap and capital budget was $92,959,547. We anticipated a debt service, the annual debt payment that we make on our debts and obligations, $22.1 million, with a total budget of $115 million. Important to note, cash reserves of $37.7 million, and these are all funds included. So this isn't just general fund, but these are MVH, local roads and streets, sewer, stormwater, all of our funds. Our, uh, general fund cash reserves, our policies, they have 50%, so the green bar would be what we're required by our own policies, uh, to be set, that we should keep in our general fund. Uh, the blue line is where we've actually been over the last several years. So you can see here that we've exceeded that by a significant margin. This is where the plot, however, thickens a bit, and it's only, I guess, appropriate for 2020 to be this way. So the reason that bar on the far right is so much higher than what our cash reserve requirements are, so you can see it clearly an outlier here where we go from 2020 of that $2 million that I referred to you guys about in terms of cash surplus. If you look at 2021, that number exponentially increases. The reason behind that is if we take a couple months back, the Department of Local Government of Finance was advising all local units of government to plan on having a 10% reduction in your income tax revenue. So Lisa and I, along with Mike Rutter, our financial consultant, took a look at that, and we said, "We understand why you would say that for the entire state. We feel as though Hamilton County is still growing, it's still developing, and it wasn't as impacted as other places." We, uh, adjusted that to about a 1.8% decrease in income tax revenue and budgeted based on that. Now, none of us, and no municipality in the state of Indiana was afforded the opportunity to know what those numbers were actually going to be until Thursday of last week. Thursday of last week, we were, uh, notified that it didn't decrease income tax revenue wise here in the city of Fishers or in Hamilton County, but it actually grew by 11%, which is a significant departure from any of the projections and forecasts that we were anticipating. Now, uh, if you recall as well, uh, our administration, along with, uh, John Weingart and other council members at the time, uh, a year ago, a year and a half ago, worked with Speaker Houston to pass legislation to change the inequities between Carmel and Fishers. Carmel, same population as the city of Fishers, uh, roughly a little bit slightly higher income per household, but not much. They receive about $20 million more of income tax revenue a year than the city of Fishers due to a formula. We were able to, for the next three years, say any increase over two and a half percent in Carmel would come to the city of Fishers to redistribute and make that more equitable. Uh, so this year, when we grew at 10.8%, that was a significant opportunity, uh, for the city of Fishers in terms of reshuffling that distribution. That, in combination with the fact that there was, um, a change in the way they were collecting income tax revenue and distributing it, uh, led to the significant increase that we see here. So with that information on Thursday, uh, we went back to the drawing board, because originally, in, in all the discussions that we were having with our Finance Committee and stakeholders, we were looking at a very, very fiscally conservative budget based on a very conservative revenue forecast. We were anticipating no additional staff. We were anticipating no raises. We were anticipating, uh, no significant infrastructure, uh, improvements, uh, like fire stations and things of that nature, just due to the fact that revenues were looking to be fairly limited. We were really in a maintenance pattern, if you will, uh, for the organization. Given this new information, uh, we sat down and Lisa crunched numbers over the weekend, and we feel as though we can make some strategic investments in our organization and still be conservative, still build cash for the future, uh, and, and also, you know, provide a little bit of a buffer here, because there are some anomalies in the way that they're collecting and distributing income tax that we really need to shake out over the next couple of years to see exactly where we're going to be moving forward. So tonight, uh, these are the proposed amendments that I have for the 2021 budget, and I call them amendments because this is, uh, changes to the budget from the last Finance Committee that we were in. So I just wanna go through these with everyone and, and talk through them. Uh, it calls for an increase in the amount allocated to nonprofits from $100,000 to $150,000. If you recall, last year, we had $250,000 in that budget. We cut it down to $100,000. I'm asking that you increase it by... I'm asking that you increase it by $50,000. There's a 3% across-the-board raise for all public employees and staff. There's a one-time $500 bonus to be paid to our employees at the end of the year. If you recall, we eliminated PTO buyback earlier this year. That's a very popular program where people can cash in their PTO time. We did that in anticipation of the difficult challenges that we were going to be in and the need for our staff. This was, and a lot of times, folks use that money for holidays, to pay off their Christmas bills and things of this nature. So we really thought that this would be a nice one-time recognition for our employees to allow them to maybe pay off some of those Christmas credit card bills and things of that nature. We have one additional shift firefighter that we would add on to the ranks this year in 2021, one additional patrol officer or police officer, one additional civilian intelligence analyst in our Police Department, and two full-time inspectors. The other important thing to note here is that I'd be advocating for fully funding the design and construction of Station 97 through the additional local income tax revenue that we'll be receiving. Just to make a point here, in the previous budget, we were advocating for just the land acquisition and design services to design the fire station, but did not have the construction funding available to us at that time. Given the new information, we feel very confident that we can afford to build the Station 97 in the northeastern part of our community. As Brad alluded to earlier, a lot of rooftops are growing in that particular part of our community, and we anticipate calls for services to continue to grow in that area. We do have a full ALS ambulance at IU Saxony today. We do not have fire protection in that particular area. This would allow us to consolidate those into one fire station in a more geographically advantageous area moving forward. So with those changes comes obviously an adjustment in the total budget. So as you can see here, this accounts for those changes. It moves our operating capital budget up to $94.9 million. Debt service stays this, goes to $22.683 million with, excuse me, a total budget of $117 million, and cash reserves of $35.7 million. This gives you an idea of what that adjustment does for the cash. So our cash reserve requirement is $14.5 million. Prior to these amendments, the cash surplus would be 20, or cash reserve would be $23 million, which is about an $8.5 million surplus above what you would even need in your cash reserve. With the changes that I'm advocating for, that only moves it down to $21 million. So you still have $6.5 million in that fund, or in excess of what you need in that fund. Why this is important is that, again, we are not 100% certain what's going to happen with income tax revenues in 2022, 2023. The wise and prudent thing to do here is not to run out and spend every dollar of that, but instead, let's keep that in our cash reserves, and as we move forward into the budget process, we can identify, next year, if we feel more confident in those revenue numbers, as Mike Rutter is able to advise as to what he thinks those projections are, and we're on sound footing, then we can all collectively come back to this table and have that discussion about where we think that money should best be invested. This budget, I feel, still meets a lot of our obligations and invests significantly in infrastructure. I think this is an important point. This year alone, in 2020, we're going to be investing $23 million in roads. This is a conversation I know Councilmember George has had multiple times, many of you that were on the council at the time that had the leadership and took the foresight to pass a wheel tax. We knew that our infrastructure was a key component of our community's quality of life, and we had to invest in it, and we continue to do so in significant measure. What we're advocating for in the 2021 budget is the continuation of that investment. So this year, we were able to pave about 14 miles of centerline roads, so about 14 miles of our road we were able to pave. We would like to do that much, if not more, going into next year. As Brad alluded to earlier, in the northeastern part of our city, we are growing, and we have done significant roadwork in that area, but there is significant roadwork yet to be done. So for case in point here, these are all road projects that still have to happen. We still have to buy right-of-way, we still have to make our local match for the federal aid. But it's roundabout at 106 and Hoosier Road. We're widening 136 Street, the one that Brad was concerned about earlier. We actually do have money and are designing to build that road. It's just not happening probably at the pace that Brad would like it to happen, but it is occurring. And then you have 126 and Southeastern, as well as Oleo and Southeastern. So that whole area is about to, in fact, I would guarantee a year from now, Brad will be complaining about how many road projects are going on out there and that he can't get around, because there's going to be a significant amount of activity in the northeast part. We also have one of our other problem childs in terms of intersections, 116th and Allison Bill, where we have a significant traffic flow issue there. We have a significant investment that we need to do there. So my point in saying that is I don't think now is the time to take our foot off the pedal when it comes to investing in our infrastructure here in the City of Fishers. It's one of the things that makes the quality of life in our community great. We continue to grow, and so we have to be able to keep up with that demand, and I think this is an important component of it. All this being said, all these moving pieces, it's important to note kind of what this means to the average taxpayer here in the City of Fishers. We really look at it from a couple different places. First one, and the one that people most want to talk about typically is property taxes. What is this going to do to my property tax rate? To put things in perspective, in 2020, our municipal tax rate, so this is just the city's tax rate, not your total tax rate, just what the city does. On the far right, these are all Hamilton County communities. You see Sheridan, Arcadia, Noblesville, Atlanta, Carmel, Westfield, Fishers, and then Fishers again, and then Cicero. So the only community in Hamilton County that has a lower municipal tax rate than what we're proposing is Cicero. And I don't remember the population of Cicero, but it's, I believe, under 5,000, or something to that effect. The reason our tax rate is going up, and I will belabor this point till I'm blue in the face, is your tax rate, although it's going up, the implication on every homeowner, every taxpayer in the City of Fishers is zero. The county tax rate will go down, the equivalent amount as the City of Fishers' tax rate will go up. This is just, this is where we collect it and distribute it. So before, it was getting collected by Hamilton County and distributed to Hamilton County. Now it will be collected by Fishers and distributed to Fishers in regard to the Health Department. So I think this is a really important point, that this is a tax-neutral request on our budget. This is just an illustration of how that works. So you can see here that the county was charging that tax rate prior to this year, and next year, they will not charge that tax rate on a Fishers resident, and the City of Fishers will charge that tax rate. So I think some key takeaways from my perspective as we look at this budget for the upcoming year is it's a tax-neutral budget. We are not requesting any sewer or stormwater fee increases. We are not asking to increase the tax rate on our residents. We are looking at significant investments in public safety through staff, as well as an additional fire station. We're asking that we continue to improve and maintain our road infrastructure to the tune of $6 million. And at the same time, we are building cash reserves to ensure the resiliency of our community as we move into those future fiscal years. With that, Council President Kobel, I would recommend you hold your public hearing, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that either residents have or council has.
Thank you, Mayor. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak regarding the 2021 budget? I don't know if we have a list going around. Chris, do we have a list, or? Okay. So anyone wishing to speak, you could come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Is there a timer? Can you hear me? Timer's right here. Okay, great. Hello, my name is Tori Edwards. I am a resident of Fishers for pretty much my whole life. And so I am at 1627 Falling Brook Drive. I have a lot of notes and questions about the budget, but I only have three minutes to talk, so hopefully this makes sense. But first of all, I would think it's really important that we mention today specifically that 200,000 US people, US citizens, and some here in Fishers have died of COVID-19. And after listening to the mayor's budget proposal and hearing some of the comments from the council, I think it's very disrespectful to those 200,000 people that have died now of COVID-19 that that wasn't even mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. So I just want to put that out there in the public record. Secondly, I do have some questions, so when that happens, I can, I have lots of questions, but one specifically is how many Fishers residents have now died of COVID-19?
Thirty-nine.
How many, how many Fishers residents have now died from COVID-19?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine Fishers residents have died from COVID-19. Okay. So Mr. Fatness, you proposed a Fishers Health Department, correct? Yes? Yeah, you have it. How long did you take to plan the Fishers Health Department? Exactly, date, like date when you started the idea in your head?
Do you have comments?
Sir, so this is not related to the budget?
Oh, it is, it is actually related to the budget, actually.
You just state your thing, and then we have to all...
Sure, okay, gotcha. Okay, so anyway, it was pretty quickly done, I would imagine. Secondly, how much of the budget currently will be used to provide PPE for Fishers residents? We've been now in this pandemic for seven months, and as far as I know, as a resident here, I have not received a mask from the City of Fishers. I know that Marion County was doing that, but still, I don't know if that's available for free to Fishers residents. I'd like to know the answer to how much a single mask would cost. I think it's around a dollar. So $1 per mask for every Fishers resident seems like a pretty good investment to me as a resident. I have 43 seconds, so I'll try to make more points. There was a Black Lives Matter protest that happened here in Fishers, and I noticed...
Sir, again, this is, this has nothing to do with the budget.
Yeah, it's relevant. I can bring that back. So there was a Black Lives Matter protest organized by the youth of this city a few months back. I think a lot of you can remember that, but if you don't remember, it happened, you can look it up. And those students that organized that protest, they actually felt like they needed to ask the permission of the mayor to hold that protest.
Sir, again, I'm going to say, can you just state, state your questions regarding the 2021...
Absolutely, the budget, sorry, the budget. Yeah, I think my time's up, so I apologize.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? You have three minutes. If you could please state your name and where you live for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Colby. I live at 7105 Cold Lake Drive, and I just want to say parenthetically, I appreciate the fact that you want to limit the amount of time that's spent on discussion, but it's a public hearing. We should have an opportunity to express our questions and concerns, whatever they happen to be, within a, you know, within more than three minutes. But saying that, there was an article that appeared in the Hamilton County Reporter byline by Larry Lannan, where the mayor indicated that there was going to be a robust road resurfacing plan. And you mentioned that this evening, I think you mentioned $5,200 was one figure for...
Five point two million.
...resurfacing, and then another 1,800 for concrete repair, and another 2,000...
One point eight million, yep.
...for design and acquisition. I'd like to know, does that robust plan exist anywhere? Is it on, I looked on the web, I didn't see it. I'd like to see some idea where that money's going to go, when it's going to get to whomever it's going to get. I kind of gathered from your discussion, it may go out to Councilmember Reamer's area, but I'd like to know maybe, if not, you know, this year maybe projected. So if you could, if that could be arranged. The other thing I have a question on, deals with the Health Department, and I guess you list personnel costs, and you list five full-time positions. Where are the COVID testers listed? Is that under services and charges? Are they contracted? Are they salaried? Does the salary come out of another department? Because I understand they're firemen, so is it coming out of that department? Are there salaries and benefits? And you mentioned various grants are available. I assume you're referring to the CARES grant as one. What are some of the others, so that we can maybe do some innovative kind of things in the Health Department? And with that, I guess I'm, oh, I've got 59 seconds left.
Private roads?
Huh?
Want to talk about private roads?
Well, private roads, the attorneys furnished me a document that gave me some direction on where we're going with that. It looks like we're going to go through another winter with potholes out there on Fishers Crossing, but hopefully next spring, someone will turn a shovel. And I had a better understanding of the scope of that project. I guess you're going to do from River Glen all the way around to Sunblast, you're going to do sidewalk to sidewalk, and that's a major undertaking. You're rebuilding a road essentially, and I can understand why there might have been a delay in due diligence necessary, and I appreciate your supply. And then last, with 11 seconds, I want to compliment the council again for maintaining a AAA bond rating. It started when I was on the council, and I see you continuing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the budget, the 2021 budget? Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. My name is Abraham Wondergem, and I live at 16331 Loire Valley Drive in Fishers. That's the Del Webb Development out there. I would like to ask you to support this budget as it is written. The reason for that is simply, the fire station issue for the Northeast quadrant has been an issue for a long time, and it is refreshing and quite well-accepted and quite, well, it's a serious issue with us out there. Brad, earlier in a meeting, said the roads aren't the best, and he's not kidding. Our primary coverage is from the 104th Street Station. If you take some of the roads that they have to drive on, the large trucks can't even make the turns. You know, they're that narrow. I'm asking you to support this primarily for four reasons. Number one, each and every citizen in Fishers benefits with this. The reason for that is, you increase the coverage, this means that your unit, where you live, possibly gets to stay there. And instead of being reassigned in case of the primary 104th Street, and our instance is out somewheres, somebody else has to come. That takes time. When you're a senior citizen looking for an EMS call, we are crucial. It is not something that can be sloughed off. It's a better response time for us. It will equal, better response times for all neighborhoods. It'll acquire better accreditation for the fine work that the Fishers Fire Department does. They do a great job. I've never lived in a city where I've seen that where customers at grocery store buy their groceries while they're out on a call. I've never seen that, and I've lived in six cities. Better insurance rates. Talking with some of my neighbors that have moved in out there, their insurance companies from where they moved into, they have trouble getting insurance because of the distance between them and a fire station. Either their coverage is denied, or they're raided, and then the insurance business raided means you pay a premium extra for, for this factor. But the last thing, the most important thing, I believe, is the fact that as the city continues to grow, and it's growing leaps and bounds. I mean, I have all the numbers and statistics. I've talked to eight community groups out there, eight developers, and we're looking at adding a significant number of people within the next two years out there. If you add the schools that are in their proximity, add the existing neighborhoods of Avalon and some of those other areas out there, this will be a bonus without question. It gives the fire department flexibility to do the good job that they do. And Chief Arusa and his men do a fine job for this city. And the flexibility that will be enabled by building this station will be reflected, you know, in, well, just, you know, a better response time, a better rate.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to close with a quick quote. My Uncle Dick was the fire chief of South Bend, Indiana in 1966. He said one quote that's always stuck in my mind. He said, "Any fireman can put out a fire with a bucket of water, provided he gets there early enough." I'd like you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Armin Azadorian, 15907 Dulcetto Drive. And I like to build on what Abe said. I've been basically working this issue of fire response in that area for 10 years. I've been a resident for 10 years. When I first got there, they couldn't even find my house. my house. And it has improved significantly. But I think the one significant point that has to be made, our district is the only district in Fisher's that has five thousand people per firefighter, where every other district in the city has approximately twenty-five-hundred fire people, residents per firefighter. So it's not, it's not something that, you know, we're just poking around here. We want to get this added coverage so we can, and plus we have senior citizens. Britton Falls alone has twenty-five-hundred senior citizens that require immediate critical care at many times during the day. So I ask council, please consider this as a request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe there were, was another person or?
Anne Kelly, 11810 Florida Road. I have a question. I didn't hear if the Geist Greenway was part of the twenty-one budget.
I believe that's already funded through federal. Yeah, the first phase, I believe it is. Okay, so construction should be in twenty-twenty-two.
Well, the road will have to be widened too, so I didn't know if Florida Road was part of that project to be widened at that time or not.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the twenty-twenty-one proposed budget? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to ask for a motion to have first reading on ordinance zero-nine-two-one-two-zero.
Motion for first reading.
Motion by Pete. And now I'm going to go ahead and open it up for a discussion and, and more questions by the city council and...
Just quick...
Council President Colby, do you want me to answer the residents' or comment on that prior to your discussion?
I'd like to comment on that too, as well. So...
Sure, yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Councilman Zimmerman.
Well, first of all, in this culture right now, it's easy to come into a room and I appreciate, you know, patience with everybody. But in this society we're in right now to lob basically a grenade in the room and then walk out, I don't appreciate. The, I can tell you, we were on calls with the mayor. I'm not here to defend the mayor. I'm a, I'm an elected official to hold accountability here. But to, to hear that there's no care or lack of care, which I think was the insinuation of Fisher's residents dying of COVID, is the furthest thing from the truth. There's a great risk to deal with the Health Department. I applaud the mayor for taking that bold step. Bumps, bumps and all. We've been through a lot. This country's been through a lot. This city's been through a lot. The people have been through a lot. My entire family was sick with this back in March when we were going through this. There were no resources at the time. I had to do telemedicine and they would look at me and make sure that I wasn't turning blue. And so I didn't have to go to the hospital because they would not test me. Or my wife, who has asthma. And so she ended up having pneumonia as a result of it. So, we were in constant calls. I don't remember if it was a weekly or I can't, I can't remember back then, but I think it was weekly calls where we're talking about everything and how this was impacting the city. And the first thing from the mayor to us and from all the council members here, regardless of Republican or Democrat, were asking about how was everybody doing? How was the health of our community? And it was the first and foremost thing that was there on our minds throughout this entire process. Whether anybody agrees with the Health Department decision or not, I can tell you, that was the motive behind it. Secondly, with the Black Lives Matter protest, I applaud the mayor and I believe Chief Gephardt. And you guys correct me because I wasn't in these meetings, so please correct me if I'm wrong. But I heard that they had meetings. They didn't get, it wasn't getting permission. They had meetings to make sure the students were safe, that their, their, their rights were fully protected so that they could express themselves freely. What you see in our nation going on is people were going out in the streets and some people were really good protesters. They're out protesting. And then people are in the midst of the protest destroying. Where I worked downtown in Indianapolis, I worked for a particular company and somebody set fire to our building, which is right off the circle, and a protester actually came in and put out the fire. They put down their sign. They went in there and they helped us. And what I would say to them, I believe, and Mayor, I'm sure you're going to speak to this, but please correct, or Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. There was meetings there not to control them, but to provide protection and make sure they had the dignity and respect of people around them so they had a safe place to protest and speak their mind. So, those are the things with regard to answer to those two things that happened. I wish the gentleman had stayed to hear that and to hear your response. I do have a couple of questions on the budget. I don't know if you want to talk first?
Yeah, I'll, I'll clear out these and then we can all answer, entertain your guys' questions. And thank you, Councilmember Zimmerman. And so first of all, you can get a free mask at the Health Department. They were handing them out at the farmer's market. So if any Fisher's resident would like to receive a mask, you can get a mask and fast, in fact, I think some of ours even say Fisher's on them if you are so bold to, to wear that brand, which I think a lot of people are. Ashley's modeling one right now, if you'd like to see it. Two things, I think, Councilmember Zimmerman, and I appreciate the, the comments. Look, when, when people were dying, when people couldn't get resources, when they couldn't get services, we chose action over complacency. And I will take the criticisms, I will take the bullets, I'll take the barbs from anyone about those decisions. But where I stand here today, you know, twelve thousand residents have been able to get a test and got a small peace of mind. Our Health Department has answered forty-three hundred phone calls of panicked residents concerned about their, their livelihood, their well-being. And so, as many of you know me, I will always choose action first. And, and these were thoughtful, they were strategic. And as we stand here today, Rome is not burning. We have been able to put a Health Department together. We are providing services. And I'm actually very optimistic, not only about today, but what we can do in the future. The integration of public health, our population's well-being, it has to be part of our responsibility. For too long, city governments have abdicated that to someone else. As we sit here today, the most valuable asset we have is our people. If we don't become good stewards of those individuals, I don't think we're going to be competitive for the long term. And so, I'm fiscally conservative. I do not in any way ever want to waste a taxpayer's dollar. My job is to provide a dollar five back in value. And I think we have done that. I think we will continue to do that. And, and I will always be open to the criticism and barbs that people want to throw at me for having taken that action, but I don't regret a single minute of it. In regard to the Black Lives Matter protest, Chief Gephardt and I were there on a Sunday night with the kids and their parents. And I can tell you, their parents were very concerned about the safety and well-being of their kids. And it's a testament to that man right over there, Chief Gephardt, that he had the relationships with these kids pre-dating this, where he was able to sit down with them and go, okay, what do you want to accomplish and how can we make sure you can do that in a safe and effective manner? That was the course, that was the point of the conversation. And Chief Gephardt and myself were there the entire night for the sole purpose of making sure that each and every one of our kids got to go home safe in an environment where that was not a guaranteed outcome, given the events of the last weekend. So I appreciate the political rhetoric, as always, but that's just factually incorrect. And I appreciate Councilmember Zimmerman's comments. As for road resurfacing, Mr. Colby mentioned, I do want to make a point of clarification. The funding that I was talking about in the northeast will be around a lot of these infrastructure upgrades. So Hundred Thirty-Sixth Street, Oleo and Cynthian, or excuse me, Oleo Southeastern, Southeastern and Cynthian, those are, those are upgrades. But for road resurfacing, that will be throughout the community. And we're always reluctant, we go through this conversation every year at the budget, we're always reluctant to say these are exactly the roads that are going to get resurfaced because between now and come next spring, roads have a way of falling apart or becoming different than what we thought they were today. So we're a little bit hesitant to say these are exactly the roads that are going to be resurfaced. But we do plan to have, again, a robust resurfacing program moving forward. As for the firefighter salaries, this is part of the, I think, the value of the integration of these services. We have trained firefighters and paramedics that are able to provide and administer those tests. Those people are not permanent members of the Health Department by any means. They're there because we have an unusual circumstance right now. And all of their salaries regarding the payment or the hours they're spending providing these tests to our residents have been reimbursed by the federal government. So the taxpayers of Fisher's are not out anything as our firefighters sand over there and do that. But I think it is unique and it should be recognized, the, the organizational character of our Fire Department that says, if you have a problem, we can go solve it. They, they stood up and said, we can do this. We'll figure out how to do this on behalf of our residents. And they've been over there every single day administering those tests and putting themselves and their families at risk by doing it. And we've been able to do that without spending a tax dollar on it. So, we think that's a, a great attribute to it. And then again, as private roads, we think there's a much broader conversation we need to have with all of you, frankly, about not only our commercial private roads, but our residential. The system we have right now just doesn't work. It doesn't work to have private roads. It hasn't worked to have private roads. And I want to bring this to a conclusion. We need to figure out where we're going with this and, and bring these in as public roads and fix them. I think the question is, how much liability do we put on the individuals who are next to those roads versus the greater taxpayers here in the city of Fisher's? That's a discussion for another day, but I do think that's a discussion we all need to have about what we feel comfortable with. But, but I think there's a general recognition that approving these private roads ten, twenty, thirty years ago really isn't functioning the way that I think anyone intended and we're going to have to address. With that, I'll turn it back over to you. I guess, Councilmember Zimmerman, you had a couple of questions?
Thank you. First of all, congratulations on the triple-A bond rating. John and the rest of the Finance Committee, excellent job. Obviously, Mayor and your staff, excellent job keeping our municipal rate to where it is, as the second lowest in the county, and keeping that triple-A bond rating is outstanding. Do we know other municipalities in Indiana that got the triple-A?
We're the only one.
We're the only one?
Yeah.
So the only, only municipality in the state of Indiana. Congratulations. In the middle of a pandemic and everything. And then, the one-time five hundred dollar, which I'm absolutely in favor of, that is not for elected officials though.
Correct, no, no, not at all.
I just want to make sure that that's clear.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So that's not for us. Good. And I think that's it.
Council President Colby?
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I just got a quick, a couple of comments here, just quickly. And again, I want to certainly thank Speaker Houston. I think one of the things that I became very aware of the inequities that were going on with this COVID distribution was actually from, you know, I guess somebody might call him my former nemesis, right, Scott Faultless, who in a number of conversations we had, really explained to me the inequities that were going on with this distribution formula. And we were aware of this for a while. We didn't know how to tackle it. We didn't know how to deal with it. So I want to give a lot of praise, not only Speaker Houston and, and our mayor, but, but John, okay, former member Rich Block and former member Eric Mohler, who did layman's work on getting this thing corrected. Because for Fisher's residents to watch millions of dollars going across the White River into Carmel every single year, that then could be used on our side of the river for things like firehouses and firemen and all the other things that Scott has now put in the budget, I can't tell you what a huge, giant win that is for this community. So I can't be more than, than praising of all the actions that occurred there at every level. So, and I'm a hundred percent supportive of the budget you put together, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do, ma'am.
Dawson?
Thank you. I will start off by saying, I would like to thank the residents who stepped forward and provided their feedback and concerns and comments. I understand stepping up to a mic and addressing the council and the mayor is a knee-knocking experience. So thank you very much for that. I will also say in hindsight, I wish we would have shared with Mr. Edwards good pathways for his concerns or comments that perhaps were unrelated to the budget so that he had an opportunity to dialogue more about that. Now, about the budget, I just have, I think, a comment. And that is, I just want to make a real distinction and be very precise in our communication. The city is entitled to, and please, Mayor Fadness, correct me if I'm wrong, okay?
Sure.
I'm just trying to translate this a little bit more into English. The city is entitled to collect a one-cent property tax for every one hundred dollars of assessed value to every property owner in incorporated areas of Fisher's to fund the new Health Department. But the city is not required to increase the overall tax rate. So I just want to be clear that collecting the one-cent tax rate, collecting the one cent for every one hundred dollars of assessed value to fund the new Health Department is indeed required. But increasing the overall city tax rate for residents in twenty-twenty-one is not required. I just want to make that very, very clear. I also just have a question about how we got to the tax rate. If the tax rate was exactly the same, we know that estimates of our property, assessed property value will increase in twenty-twenty-one. That, we're pretty confident about that. So even if the tax rate were flat from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, residents will pay a little bit more for their taxes just because your property value most certainly will increase. I also want to kick back to last year at this time. The decision was made to have increased the property tax rate two cents to replace deteriorating roadways, but that at that time was discussed as being clearly a one-year tax increase. So that happened and was incurred this past year in twenty-twenty. That should kick our tax rate down two cents. And then we need to go up one cent to cover the Health Department. I share that, I break that all down with you because I would like to see that's where our tax rate should fall for twenty-twenty-one is actually just one cent lower than twenty-twenty. I believe that one cent tick-down is a net of about six hundred thousand dollar decrease in city revenue. Now, that's nothing to sneeze at, I know, but it seems like in the forecast where we are right now, that should be something to look at. So I just present that with you, present that to residents in the room and the council, just with that clarity is the way I understand it. Thanks.
Any other questions from city council members?
Just a comment here. As Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, I want to thank Scott for, his team for all their hard work. Certainly, we have some more work to do as we just have first reading this evening. Want to, some people I want to thank, former Councilor Eric Mohler, former Councilor Rich Block, Todd Houston, all those who, you know, started this process. As some of you may or may not be aware, we actually negotiated, worked through this actually right back here with city councillors from Carmel. And it was a rather interesting conversation, to say the least. And their, their financial professionals said, you know, if you, if you want to raise more money, you just need to raise your taxes a whole bunch. And that was something we don't really do here. We have one of the lowest tax rates in the entire county, if not the city. I'm very pleased to, to bring a budget like this forward because I've been in budget conversations before that we've had to go back and redo things because the money came in at a much lower amount than we were. So I feel extremely strong about this budget. I feel very confident about this budget and the things we're able to do. My clients aren't, or I shouldn't say my clients, my constituents of my district are not beating me over the head about the tax rate. They're beating me over the head about the roads not being fixed. That's what they're beating me over the head about. That's what I get to hear about more. If I bring up some roads being repaired, here's the actual comment I get every single time. We're getting ready to do one hundred and sixth and Hoosier Road. What about this one? What about this one? What about this one? What about this one? You can't do it for nothing. You've got to keep, keep the foot in the gash. We've got to keep repairing these roads and keep our, you know, our, our infrastructure strong. And if we don't, it's just going to cost us more later. Brad, you're going to see in your district. We got it, we've got to double down. We've got to take care of that area. We're putting a fire station in that's sorely needed. Things like this are not cheap, but still, we're able to deliver those goods and services, probably the lowest number of employees per person in the entire county, if not the state. Also, one of the lowest tax rates. I think we're, we're next to what, Cicero? Pretty incredible value, ladies and gentlemen. And again, I don't get beat over the head about the tax rate. I get my head beat over the head about the roads not being repaired. So I'm pleased we're doing all that and I'm, I'm be full supportive of this budget.
Thank you, John, for your leadership and everyone that worked really hard for this, this budget too. I'm really impressed with all the efforts that everyone has done. So with that, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and close the discussion. And this ordinance will go back and in the October council meeting.
So two pieces of moving forward, just to tee this up a little bit. We have a levy appeal. appeal, which is, as we talk about the mechanics of this health department, tax rate moving from the county's obligation, now having it on the city's, it's, the levy appeal is a component of that. So you have that for your consideration coming up, as well as a salary ordinance. And Lisa Bradford will be able to share any, or answer any questions that you might have moving forward. Thank you, Council President Kobel.
Thanks, Mayor. So with that, we're going to move on to item 10. It's Resolution 092120A. And this is, again, the request to approve the excess levy appeal petition. And we're going to hear from Lisa. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. Indiana code allows a unit to seek an increase in its maximum levy for extending governmental services to additional geographic areas. For the 2021 budget year, the deadline to submit your excess levy appeal to the Department of Local Government Finance is October 19th. So therefore, that's why we are requesting the excess levy appeal at this budget, at this council meeting. Indiana code also requires any request for an excess levy appeal be advertised as part of the notice to taxpayers of the estimated budget. And so this notice of excess levy appeal was posted as part of the gateway budget and advertised. So the city is petitioning DLGF solely upon extension of government services not previously rendered to Fishers residents through the creation of the health department. And as code, the tax cannot exceed one penny as a second-class city. And as we have discussed, the county can no longer assess a tax on Fishers residents. So there is, Fishers residents will no longer have that tax rate associated with it from the county. Any questions? Happy to answer questions.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Lisa. Motion approved by Pete. Do I have a second? Second by Selena. I'm not going to open it up for discussion now. Any comments, questions, discussions? Okay, seeing that. I'll now call for a vote for Resolution R092120A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And just as a point of clarification for the residents, the county cannot assess this penny tax now. We can assess this penny tax, so the net effect to you and I is zero. Also, I've also checked with the county, their county, our county tax rate for Hamilton County is going to remain the same for 2021. So again, this will not affect your taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We're now moving on to item 11 on the agenda. It's Ordinance 092120B. It's a request to approve the city of Fishers 2021 salary ordinance. And we have Ethan Lee, Director of Human Services, to give a presentation. Thank you, Ethan.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Ethan Lee, Director of Human Resources. I'm here to present to you the first reading of the city's 2021 salary ordinance. Indiana code requires that city legislative body by ordinance fix the annual compensation of each city employee. The city has chosen to use a bi-weekly salary schedule to establish the maximum salary for each position under the ordinance. It should be noted that any of these changes, other than the health department positions, will result in no increase in employee headcount. Rather, these changes are a result of shifts in job duties or department structure. The proposed changes are as follows. Under the health department, adding position titles epidemiologist, health educator, and nurse. Change the Director of Economic Development title to Director of Economic and Community Development, as well as move that position into a higher salary grade. Change the Building Commissioner title to Building Commissioner and Environmental Health Services Coordinator. Change Director of Public Relations title to Director of Community and Public Relations. Change Website Coordinator title to Digital Coordinator. Add new position title of Volunteer Coordinator. Add new position title of Community Engagement Coordinator. Add new position title of Senior Infrastructure Inspector. Change Traffic Technician title to Asset Manager. And finally, move Inspector of Water Quality into a higher salary grade. Again, other than the health department positions, this does not result in any change to the headcount of employees, simply cleaning up titles and making it more in line with the structures of the departments. If there's any changes based on the budget, we will come back and bring our revised version of this at the October council meeting. But if there are any questions, I'm happy to address them now.
Are there any questions for Ethan?
Motion our first reading.
Motion by Pete to have our first reading, so this will go back and we will look at it in October. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 12. This is a Resolution R092120. This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the transfer of interest in real estate to the Fishers Redevelopment Authority. And Lisa Bradford will be providing the presentation on this.
Thank you. This is a procedural step related to the permanent financing of the transportation ban, bond anticipation note. So the Fishers Redevelopment Authority has approved the issuance of its lease rental revenue bonds to permanently finance road projects. So in 2015, a bond anticipation note, we commonly refer to as the transportation ban, was issued for a variety of projects, and it has come due to permanently finance this. So the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Commission have both approved the leases in their meetings. And a portion of 131st Street between 37 and I-69 will be the leased asset. And as a procedural step, the city simply transfers the real estate interest to the Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a motion to approve R092120?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete. Is there a second? Second by Todd. Do we have any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of R02120, R092120, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passes. We move on to government and miscellaneous items on item 13. This is an Ordinance 092120C. This is a request to approve an amendment to Chapter 91 of the City of Fishers Code of Ordinances dealing with animals. And here to give the presentation is our city attorney, Chris Grisel.
Thank you, President Kobel. Members of the council for the record, Chris Grisel, Attorney for the City of Fishers. I'm going to keep my comments rather brief tonight. As this council may remember, back in January, February, at the beginning of the year, we were prepared to bring forward a first reading of a revised animal ordinance, which was spearheaded by the Humane Society here of Hamilton County. And the purpose of the animal ordinance revisions really is to make sure that all communities in Hamilton County can have, excuse me, a similar animal ordinance, as outdated practices have gone on since the last time the council has made any significant substantive changes to this ordinance. And so, the Humane Society, so anyways, January, February comes around, we're bringing this forward. COVID hits, and this topic kind of gets parked for a while. The Fishers Police Department and the Humane Society have been engaged in some robust conversations regarding the amendments. In fact, they just met on Friday. And we'll have further markups for your revision, which I hope to be able to provide to you within the next week or so. But what I want to do is just to provide this to you, let you know that we are getting the ball rolling so that we can get this process brought forward to be updated with other Hamilton County communities. The police department will continue to be engaged with the Humane Society, and we hope to be back in October with a very robust conversation where the Humane Society, partners from the county, can be here present to answer all of our questions regarding these updates and modifications, particular to these best practices.
Thanks, Chris. Are there any questions from the council?
Motion our first reading.
First reading motion by Pete, and so this will come back for council review in October's meeting. Thank you. We're now moving to the planning and zoning portion of our meeting. Item number 14 is an ordinance 051820B. It's a request to approve a rezone of two properties from ER and R2 to a PUDR. And the properties consist of 157 acres and are located in the corner of 113th Street and Southeastern Parkway. The project is known as the Grantham PUD. And this is for, up for a final reading. And so we have Tony Bagano from our planning, who will talk about this project. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. You have Tony Bagano, Director of Planning and Zoning. This item was before you, twice before for first reading, continued the first time. Due to COVID, there was some concerns with getting outreach to the residents before council meeting, so that was presented there twice. It went to Plan Commission in August. And again, try to just highlight where we are today. This property is shown in the area was outlined in red. It's a total of 156 acres. It includes mostly R2 zoning property that's been there historically since Noblesville had jurisdiction over it, and some 11 acres of estate residential, which was changed over time. And I'll show a little history there to highlight that. So this map shows the area, all that kind of beige-yellow is R2. That's what it was zoned in 2013. Again, going back to when Noblesville had authority over it, it was R2 designation, which is overall, in our city, we say that that's about 15,000 square foot lots. So if you looked at just the lot size, square footage, it'd be about three units per acre. Our comp, our UDO does say, though, the range is intended to be 1 to 1.7, but again, 15,000 square foot lots would get you three units per acre. Then in 2014, is that little ER section was added here, the square. This is the 11 acres today. That's include, a portion of that is included. This was done as part of the annexation in that area, or the, in the city limits taking over some of the jurisdiction. We offered opportunities for residents to take either agricultural zoning or state residential, and this chunk of land was added as part of that addition. And then in 2016, we had the PUDR next door come in at Welchel Springs, and that's the gray area. So you can see the development here. This development will connect to Welchel Springs, which is very consistent with our comp plan, as well as the overall density of this project. And then in 2017, we had approved the comp plan in 2016, and it talked about the future land use for estate residential zoning. We wanted to make sure we maintained lots and land for estate homes, large one-acre developments or more, up to five-acre developments. And so the city, a city initiated a request that I took through the rezoning process, worked with the Falk Creek residents and the trustee out there, had a town hall meeting back then to let them know that the zoning before this rezone would occur was already R2. And so we had some opposition when we were trying to actually downzone it. There was concerns about traffic and sewer, and we tried to highlight then, well, this is actually a benefit because by increasing the number of estate residential lots out there, we're actually downzoning this area. So this was already done based on the comp plan work that was done in 2016. And so there's been some comments that there hasn't been planning efforts in this area, and these are just to try to show that, you know, we strongly disagree with that, that there's really been thoughtful land use planning out there, as well as some of the transportation side when the development occurs. And so the state residential that's part of the comp plan is already in place. So the property we're talking about today is still zoned R2. The benefit that the residents have had out there is that it's been one major landowner who owns 140 of the acres, 145 acres, with one home. But by zoning, it could be three units per acre. So I just want to keep that in mind as we paint the picture for the plan we're presenting tonight. So again, this is the other zoning that came next door. There's two more PUD developments. The one to the south has actually been changed to open space. This is now the city's agri-park, agricultural park that was designated as open space when we were given the land as part of the PUD across the street. So the development out here has been low-density residential, and that's what the proposal you'll see tonight is for. So again, it's zoned R2 with this 11 acres here shown as part of ER today. But again, overall, most of the development is zoned R2 by right. The comp plan shows it as low-density suburban residential, which is a range of 220 units per acre. And again, this proposal is much in line with the comp plan. I will highlight the comp plan does not also have a road going through there, because there's been discussions about Cynthia and extending all the way through. That is not part of the transportation plan. And so if someone came in today to develop without a PUD, we still could not require that road. It would require a change to the transportation plan. And whether or not that should be required is a different discussion. I think the cost involved in promoting a roadway to go south and a bridge over Geis is a huge expense with little benefit. And so that's something that would have to be discussed by the council on the change of the transportation plan. Here's the proposal that we saw at first reading. The developer has gone at great lengths to work with the residents out there to provide buffering, enhanced architecture, a gated area portion for the estate lots, for the executive lots, I mean, and to keep as much of the natural greenscape on 113th Street, even the fence, the existing fencing and gate to keep this area look the same from the roadway as it is today as much as possible. So here's a real quick overview of the development standards to show comparison. So by the UDO, by right, they can develop this property today without a PUD. The range of those lots would be anywhere from 15,000 square feet. They're proposing from 11,000 to 6,000 within a range, and that's intended to preserve as much of the wooded area as possible and work around the natural terrain. And that's usually the benefit of the PUD. Part of the open space under R2, I think the table originally said 20%, and that's a mistake. It's actually 10% under R2. So if someone developed R2, they'd only need 10% open space. If they did a preservation concept, they would have to have 40%. And what we're showing today in the PUD is they are at 40%. The buffer yards, under the UDO, there is no buffer yard required. Since you have residential next to residential, they just have to comply with the setbacks, and there would not be any buffering yard. Again, with the UDO and even tree preservation area, there's no buffering required. In this case, though, they are providing buffering yards, and in some cases, up to 30 feet, which is as much as our commercial standard. So they're trying to be very cautious of the residents out there and being thoughtful. And then again, under our regular UDO, there's no tree preservation actually required. There is a preservation kind of ordinance. If they want to preserve trees, they can get some reductions in their lot width and setbacks. But they are preserving as much trees as possible, even relocating some of the trees on site, the larger trees, to put them up against the neighbors. And then they're also maintaining the streetscape along 113th Street and Southeastern Parkway. Here's some of the examples that the homes have been reviewed and approved by our PUD committee that reviewed this before the Plan Commission. Again, these are all in compliant with our UDO and actually above and beyond our standards if someone wanted to build in our, in our UDO today. Here again is that entry feature in the gate line of the fencing that they're maintaining on 113th Street, and they're going to extend it, a new fencing to match that all the way to Southeastern. So you have this same look and feel all the way down for the fencing. And then here's some of the other homes for the family district, and then the professional district. One of the commitments I will highlight from the, from the PUD committee is they did ask that there only be one-story homes put in along Southeastern Parkway, which the developer's committing to that. Without that commitment today, under R2, those could all be two-story homes, which would be more of a visual impact. And then again, I also would highlight that, under the UDO, we do allow vinyl. It has to be incorporated with masonry, but there is vinyl components in the UDO. And in this PUD, they're proposing no vinyl. They're actually prohibiting aluminum gauge vinyl, as well as not permitting any kind of siding like that. So again, this is above and beyond our UDO. From a density standpoint, it's a, as we were saying earlier, so under R2, the zoning says it could be anywhere from one unit to 1.7 units per acre. But that's based on when you calculate roadways and other kind of requirements. With 15,000 square foot lots, as I alluded to earlier, the technical density range gets you right to 2.9 units per acre. So I didn't put that number in there, because you do lose some of that with roadways. But if you looked at just 2.9 units per acre, this would put the development at 455 units. But going on the range of the UDO at 1 to 1.7, the total units for this project, if they wanted to build by right without a PUD and without council approval, they can come in and file a plat that would be reviewed by staff, and it would have to be approved if it didn't have any waivers by law. And they could have anywhere from 158 to 261 lots by right. And so when staff was reviewing these concerns that we've received from the public and reviewing the PUD for the 290 units, we're weighing the difference between 132 units and 29 potentially by right, more than what's allowed by right. So when you have to look at the impacts we're given, we did not believe that these were significant concerns. Although we do, you know, empathize and hear them, we were analyzing them, looking at them, and saying that this is already zoned R2 today. So again, the impacts we're looking at would be there either way, and we're trying to do a development and mitigate those concerns. So the traffic concerns we've heard about out there with the roadways, we've, we've talked to engineering, and we've had studies done by A&amp;F that looked at the roadway. They believe that Southeastern Parkway will can accommodate the additional roads that would be above and beyond what the PUD is asking for than by right. And also just indicate that when developments come in, that's when the roads get improved, or over time, when the city has funding, we'll improve those to meet those. So a lot of the roads out there will be improved over time and are being improved today. One of the concerns- One of the concerns we heard for the last couple of months is overcrowding of schools. I talked to the school district before the Plan Commission meeting, and this is something that the schools are already aware of, the development out there. They are building a new school in Wayne Township. That redistricting is going to occur by 2022. They're going to have that school finished, and this area is going to have to be redistrict for that school, whether or not this development even occurs today by right or not at all. So the schools in this area are, their issue they ran into, overgrowth, was due to a larger enrollment of kindergarten kids at the last year that they did not anticipate. Unfortunately, until they have kids in the building, they never know how many they have. So when the kindergarten level comes in, that's the hardest one to project. So that's where they did run into some over classroom sizes and put in some modular units, but they will be redistricting because of the new school anyways. Again, without this development having any impact on that. And then there was concerns about overbuilding with too many rooftops, and the reality is, you know, we're still wishing permits today, the market's still moving. And again, from the city side, all we can look is what's allowed by right, and it's zoned for residential today, it's zoned R2. As I mentioned at the Plan Commission meeting, if this was farmland and they were trying to convert it, I think it'd be a different discussion, but it's already zoned residential today. And then there was just concerns about ruining the natural area. And from our analysis, we think this PUD gives the property the best chance of keeping as much natural area as possible, as well as protecting, one of the reasons we try to limit the amount of roads we put out there is because the east side of Fishers is much different than the west side of Fishers, and we're trying to keep it more rural and natural looking, and we don't want widened roads, wider roads than we do in downtown or around the rest of the city. So this is, there's intentional thought behind this. And so the developers worked with the residents as much as possible. It did go before Plan Commission, and it was approved, recommended for approval on a six to two, one vote. And staff is here for any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Did the petitioner want to speak as well?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fagory-Drinker, and I'm pleased to be here this evening representing Platinum Properties on the Grantham PUD project that's before you. And from Platinum with me tonight is Mr. Paul Rio, if you have any questions for him. Just got a couple of things. Tony did a great job giving you the overview, but I just wanted to highlight. So I just wanted to cover just a handful of kind of key issues and then some of the things that, the discussions with the neighbors as well. So some of the key planning issues Tony already addressed, but number one, is this project consistent with the city's comprehensive plan? Tony went into detail about how this is planned for suburb, low-density suburban residential, which means under two units per acre, and this is at approximately 1.84 units per acre, so the answer is yes. This is consistent with the, the density range encouraged by the comprehensive plan. Does this include single-family detached homes? The answer is yes. Is there a variety of density ranges and different housing types? These are things specifically noted by the staff of how this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the answer is yes. If it was just zoned, as it's zoned today, all R2 with 100-foot wide lots by 150-foot deep, those would all be the exact same type of lots. There would be no ability to have different sizes lots, different type of housing types within the entire 150-some acres. So that's a positive as well of how it's also consistent with the comprehensive plan. Another topic that is in the comprehensive plan, it's in our packet as well for you, but is this near existing and plans, planned parks and trails? And so hopefully you had a chance to see what we had put into the packet. It's an interesting area of our, of our city that has at least three different government jurisdictions that have parks out in this area. So we have the City of Fishers with the Black Fork Park, the County with the Geis Park, the Township with its Fall Creek Natural Area, then the Synthian Park up here is the City of Fisher's Park. One of the key things, obviously, when the city and the county and the township are investing in parks and trails, it makes good sense to be able to have those near where the people are, to be able to enjoy them. So that's one of the things in the comprehensive plan, encouraging parks, but also to do it in an area that will be accessible by people that would be able to enjoy that. So that's another positive that we have. And then lastly, under the comprehensive plan, there's a very big encouragement, obviously, here in the city, to be able to have a trail network to get people to walk back and forth and to bike and to get outside, not only for their physical well-being and their emotional well-being, but also to engage with other people out on those trails. And so as part of this project, the city's trail system doesn't get built overnight. It gets planned, and then it gets implemented as projects come through. So the perimeter trail system will be extended along 113th Street, up Southeastern, in all those areas that are right in front of this, this particular site. One of the things that came up in one of our conversations with some of the neighbors was we heard from, I don't know if I've got a good aerial here. One of the comments that we heard was 113th Street's a beautiful stretch of road, but between Southeastern Parkway and Florida Road, there's no trail or sidewalk along 113th Street. And so one of the things we took from that comment was then we reached out shortly after that to the Parks Department and asked the Parks Department, would the city like to see this development extend the trail, not just in front of this property, but also from the property all the way to Florida Road, to be able to provide the residents that are out here already the opportunity to be able to connect to the trail system, to get to the Agri Park, to get to the Good Guys Greenway, to get to all the other trail networks. And we discussed the opportunity to be able to do that in exchange for park impact fee credits. That's still subject to a handful of things that would need to happen, right-of-way acquisition and things like that. But it was definitely something that can happen, and one of the benefits of doing a development project, to be able to provide some of that core infrastructure. A second key topic from a planning perspective is the city's professional planning staff support. You know, as we've had a chance to talk with lots of people as we've went through this project, the normal process is a developer will look at a piece of property, find out that it's available, try to assess, what does the city's guidance documents say? What does the comprehensive plan say? What does the zoning ordinance say? What's it zoned today? What could you go develop it for today without seeking any additional approval? And then you think of, well, if we could do a PUD amendment, we know that if we're seeking some flexibility on some standards, the city will want, in exchange, some additional standards that would go above and beyond what's required in the UDO today. And as Tony mentioned in his report, there's some, there's a number of things here that are going above and beyond what would be required if it just was platted under straight zoning. So as the, the development team then looks at that and considers what they think would meet the market, as well as meet the city's guidance documents, we then meet with the professional planning staff. And in my 20-some years of doing this here in Fishers, I, it's just the rarity that we would ever present a project or file it if we weren't on the same page with the city's professional planning staff. They sift out lots of projects that don't meet the comprehensive plan, that don't, aren't consistent with good planning principles. And it's just like when the city is looking at deciding to create a health department, we turn and look to the health experts. When the city's looking at tax issues, the city looks to the tax experts. And so when we look at planning and zoning, the city's professional planning staff is, in our opinion, the critical first step to make sure that the proposed plan is meeting good planning principles. So that's a long way of saying, yes, this is consistent with the city's planning staff's recommendations. I think in their report, they noted that this is a highly desirable development that exceeds the UDO's existing minimum requirements. Tony mentioned that this did receive unanimous favorable recommendation from the city's Architectural Review Board, which reviewed the architecture and design, and then the City Plan Commission voted six to two, to one favorable recommendation. And then just to kind of hit a highlight, I want to go over everything that Tony talked about. Let me just give you some updates, because I know the City Council always wants to hear, kind of, what has the developer done to meet with people and to try to listen. Part of that process, in addition to the, working with the city planning staff and the city council members on feedback and comments and guidance, it's also the developer's role, when they do it properly, is to meet with the neighbors, hear what their questions and concerns are, and try to address them. Most projects have a certain rhythm to them, and typically will meet with neighbors, and they'll have a top five issues, it seems to be. And then there's always the, if they rank them in importance to us, then the top one that's most important, that doesn't cost the developer a whole lot to comply, those are easy to say yes to. The ones that are at the very lowest bottom of priority or importance, but that costs a lot for the developer to do, those normally don't get done. And then we work in the middle, the middle ones, to try to see how we can't reach some accommodations. So I'm just going to go through these. They're in the packet, but in case you didn't get a chance to see those, I just thought I'd highlight these. So the neighborhood next door to the west, the Nestledown Farms neighborhood that has six lots, I believe, that has been there for about 21 years, three, I think three homes were built, one, I think another one is under construction. The idea, the request there was, is there any way to be able to make the lots adjacent to Nestledown Farms, a little bit larger, do something for those, since those are larger lots? And the answer was yes. So those lots now, compared to the existing R2, those lots will be 33% larger than currently required. There's also going to be an additional three trees planted near the shared property line, and all the homes that are adjacent to Nestledown Farms will have a minimum first floor of masonry. Then, let me give you the... The Sundermans live right here, on the other side, at the northeast corner of 113th and Southeastern, and they had a number of requests. The original plan, you might recall, the original plan that was before the City Council, we had a frontage road here, thinking that that would be well-received. It was not well-received, particularly by the Sundermans, who asked whether Paul Rio could change the plan to not have a frontage road, instead to redesign it the way he did. So the answer to that request was yes. Could you remove the frontage road? And so that was done. Secondly, could you add mounds and trees along Southeastern in addition to the street trees? So that was an additional landscaping and buffering that would go in along 113, along Southeastern here. Then there was a request to, early on, to remove the two-family attached. You might recall at first reading and discussions with the staff, that it had been suggested that possibly it would be appropriate to have paired patio homes as part of this project. The nearby neighbors objected to that, so that was withdrawn from the proposal. And then the Sundermans also asked whether, to orient you a little bit, there's a substantial row of trees along the Sunderman's property adjacent to Southeastern Parkway. And so they asked whether Mr. Rio would agree to dedicate additional right-of-way on the Grantham side of the road, so that there would be the full width of the right-of-way that the city's thoroughfare plan calls for, granted by the Grantham project, to enhance the opportunity that those trees would not have to come down. Obviously, that, we can't control what the city's eventual plan is, but we can control whether we dedicate enough right-of-way to be able to provide that additional flexibility. So that was agreed to as well. Next is Mr. Schlute. Mr. Schlute lives right, right up here, just to the north of the property, and he had, Mr. Rio met with him, and Paul probably met with more neighbors on-site on this project than any developer I can think of in recent memory, with substantial periods of time out walking the property, particularly with Mr. Schlute. He had a number of requests, and I'll just go down through those with you. One thing Tony mentioned, he, Mr. Schlute had asked for some type, for a buffer, and there is no buffer required between residential and residential under the city's UDO. So any buffer between two residential projects is above and beyond anything that's required. And so one of the things that was agreed to early on was that there would be, essentially, the planting requirements between a commercial development and a single-family residential development would require nine trees per 100 feet to be planted. Paul Rio agreed to do that early on, and that was presented at the Plan Commission. He's had continued discussions and has walked the property again with Mr. Schlute, and so these are some additional things. Let me try to zoom in a little bit more, make it easier to read. So there was a question that Mr. Schlute had about the existing fence on the southern boundary. Mr. Rio agreed that if that fence was removed, it'll be replaced in the same location with a, with a new fence. There were certain fence panels that, on the Maguire property, which is the property immediately south of Mr. Schlute's, that Paul agreed that he would provide to him. This is copied and pasted directly from a letter that was provided to Mr. Schlute, so just we wanted you to share, share that with me as well. Then Paul Rio also agreed that he would provide, plant 20 Norway spruce trees, or suitable alternatives if those weren't available, to be planted on Mr. Schlute's property in locations of his choosing. And those trees will be eight feet tall planting, will be planted in molten, will be installed prior to the end of 2021. Then there's also a mounding area in the northeast portion of the site, which is, like this area that we're discussing. And Mr. Rio agreed with Mr. Schlute, that that will be a minimum of six feet tall at its highest point. We'll try and make it taller if possible. The landscape buffer would be a combination of various trees, and the mound will taper. So they, this is documented, just everything they talked about on the walking tour. They also had a minimum height for the mound along the northern property line. Again, we mentioned the nine trees before, and then he also agreed that he would provide access to the sewer water, gas to the property line as part of that. So those were some of the, those were the neighbor comments that we had engagement with and had specific requests. We also, as part of the process, had some of the city council members add some specific requests to see if, whether they could be incorporated into the project. And I want to just hit a couple of the highlights from those. One of the things that strikes just about anybody when they go out to this area is just the beautiful nature of, of the 113th Street corridor. It's a tree-lined street. It looks very much like what Synthian, or I'm sorry, what Connecticut Avenue used to look like before Vermillion was developed, and the county had the jurisdiction on that road at that time, and essentially required the widening and the clearcutting of almost all those trees. So from the very beginning, the developer, you know, met with the city staff, engineering and planning, said, if there's any way we can work together to safely keep the trees, keep a narrow street to make it a very enjoyable street, that's what we would like to do. And then also, there's a beautiful entryway and fence and columns out out in this area as well. And so one of the requests was a way to be able to extend that look and feel from where it is today, all the way along 113th Street, until you get to Southeastern Parkway. And the reason for that quest, request was, if you've been out there, once you get to about here where the creek is, there's this beautiful tree-lined area, there's the beautiful columns and fences, and then it stops, and this essentially is a corn and bean field right here. And so the request, if you saw it in the PUD ordinance, that the provisions in the ordinance would provide that that same fence and column section will be extended from where it ends now, and extended all the way over here to the intersection of 113th and Southeastern. And then there's a significant number of trees to be planted well beyond what the street tree requirements or the perimeter landscaping requirements would be to help create that same look and feel and extend that all along 113th Street. That's one of those requests and catches that we will all benefit from years and years from now, if it wasn't caught, if there wasn't planned for that. So that was a significant request. And then also, there was a request to consider doing something unique. We don't have very many gated communities here in Fishers, and so one of the requests that was made was, could you make this particular area the executive session here? And that's, their homes are probably expected to be between $500 and $100,000. And so this is, was agreed to, to make it that a gated community, to provide some exclusivity, taking advantage of the existing fence and columns and entryway. And so we were, Mr. Rio was happy to agree to do that as well. Those are the highlights of the updates and changes that we made since first reading. We put in the packet the ordinance. It actually was redlined to show you the changes that were made since then. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but we would respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Is, um, with that, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
To approve 051820B. Motion by Pete. Is there a second? Second, second by John. At this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for any comments or questions from the council. At this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for any comments or questions from the council.
First of all, when I moved here in 2005, I was an engineer. Cynthia Road, thoroughfare plan, due north and south, right through the north project, which if you're an engineer, is what it should be. Based on the 1820 survey in Indiana, you watch the main road every half mile, and Cynthia Road has provided that every half mile, north and south, plus with the broom route, there might be an interchange at the interstate at Cynthia. That would have taken Cynthia all the way down to 113th. For some reason, I don't know why, it was one part of the plan, we got moved out, so we're not helping move our tractors and that north and west quarter coming to Cynthia Road. Number two, which I've already talked about, we have over 3,129 approved lots for that area. To add another 290, school might think they can handle it, but I would be in another temporary housing for our school already. And as I've already mentioned, we're dealing with three kinds of roads out there with 3,000 lots. It is not working for the kids for us. The PUD zone is where I personally have a problem. And the reason is, I live in Brick Falls, which is a PUD, very similar to what we're trying to do here in real experiment. Side setback. R2 zoning is supposed to be 15 feet. They're proposing five feet. That's 10 feet between your house. You can shake hands with your neighbor, you can never open your side windows without intrusion on your neighbor. So it's ridiculous, you can put sides in, you have to bet someone wants to bet. The other problem is really getting serious out there. The developer cannot braid 10 feet between houses. So every time it rains, it does not rain. And when you turn on the irrigation, three days a week, the water will grass, it stays wet. We have a tremendous mold problem growing on all the sides of the house of Brick Falls. Last month, the developer demanded the homeowner clean it up at their expense. This is a real problem, when you have a house five feet apart, five feet from the side line. Number two, their lot size from R2 is 15,000 square feet. They're proposing 11.7, 1,700, 9,500, and 6,000. That's two and a half times the minimum 15,000 for R2. The width of the lot, R2 is 100, they're proposing 90, 75, and 50. 50-foot wide lot, half what's required for R2. The rear setback, and this is another real big problem with Brick Falls. R2 zoning is 40-foot rear setback. They're proposing 20 feet. You have a 10-foot rear easement, you can only put in the 10-foot patio, and you can't put in a 10-foot patio. The first three years that I was on this city council, 50% of every BZA meeting, for three years, was Brick Falls rear setback, to go before the borders of the field to get married, so the people could put in the patio. 20-foot is ridiculous for your rear. Also, 20 feet means your neighbor is 40 feet away. Rear to rear, patio to patio. So if I'm on my rear patio, how is on here a rear patio? That's how close we are together. I was at a function the other night with four couples, eight people, on the rear patio. We didn't start till seven o'clock. At nine o'clock, the host says, we got to move inside. I said, why do we have to move inside? He said, well, the neighbor goes to bed at nine o'clock, and she'll be out there at 9:10 complaining that we're making too much noise. So we have to move inside. There's no privacy when you have a 20-foot rear setback between homes. The front setback, R2 is 40, they're proposing 25, 10 by 20. 20 feet is enough to park your car from sidewalk to the garage door, and no room to even walk around your car. So the 20 setback doesn't work in Brick Falls. Those are the setbacks. Now, the lots per acre, let's be real, R2 zoning says 1.7. You don't buy, total acres, you buy 15,000, excuse me, Tony, it disagrees to be a lot. That means you have no retention upon anything else that you're going to use 15,000. I think I've missed that. The ordinance says 1.7. Out of 158 or 157 acres, depending what it's like, I'm looking at, 61 acres of that is wood or drainage area that you can't build in anywhere. So let's be honest, 158 minus 61, not developed acres, is 97 acres, should be the denominator for all the calculations. Using R2 zoning at 1.7, 97, would give you 165 total lots. They're proposing 125 more than what would actually be built in the R2 zoning. So I think we need to do the denominator realistic. With that 97 lots, they're actually doing three lots per acre. R2 zoning is 1.7, and these PUD requirements that have been in Fishers for too many years, in my opinion. I'm an engineer, I've designed subdivisions for 30 years, and we have so many PUDs that Tony can't even keep up with what each one does to enforce them. And the inspector can't keep up enforcing these, and that's why the developers are getting away with some things that they shouldn't be doing. So I think the R2 zoning is appropriate for that area. Leave it R2, let the developer develop.
Anybody else with any comments or questions from the city council? I just want to, I also want to just thank the petitioner and everybody for working with the residents and working with the city staff. I am not going to be in favor of this tonight, and it just, you know, I see out there what's going on, and I just don't think our infrastructure's planned at this point to have something like that. I would like to see a unique concept in the R2 section, you know, with the fence and the gate, and more of a custom feel, since there's so many, like, large estates and open land. I just, I'm just not fond of the density with the other lot taking into consideration, so... But I really appreciate, you know, everybody, you know, working with the city and with the petitioners, with the landowners, but at this point, just based on what I'm seeing out there, just, I'm not going to be able to vote for that tonight.
Let me make a couple of quick comments, if I can, and certainly I appreciate everybody's feedback as to date. And Brad, I actually had Jason look into the Cynthia question, which you have. He cannot find any historical knowledge of Cynthia going through. So, again, I asked the question, because I appreciate you saying that it should go through, and I'm not going to argue whether it should or shouldn't, but to, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, please. You did look at that, and we never saw that on any thoroughfare plan that you could find historically, looking back.
In 2005, we had a 260 plan, and still showed at Cynthia and Veridover, and that was a quarter of it.
Okay. So we never had that on there. So again, I like to call these kind of the myths that are out there. The schools being overcrowded, we don't handle the schools. Tony did everything he possibly could to talk to schools. I talked to the schools. The schools can handle every bit of that population which comes in there. So for us, making any kind of comments or questions that it can't be handled, really isn't in our purview. You've got to talk to the schools, the schools have been talked to, both by Tony and by others, I think, and the council have also made conversations with the schools. So the schools are fine. The other thing, which I think is a big misnomer that kind of continues to go on here, is if we don't approve this, and then any single development project has to come back to city council. That's flatly false. Flatly false. If they go in there and do an R2 standard, and Brad, I'm not going to argue with your mouth, although I don't agree with it, okay? You don't have to see this again at council. They don't have to bring it forward. They can go ahead and plot R2. So let's go out to my neighborhood. My neighbor is an R2 neighborhood, okay? You go out there and look at the homes that I have, which have the setbacks that Brad is talking about, and I put a patio on the back of my house, by the way, and I don't reach out and shake hands with my neighbor, and, because it was extra width to where they can start putting things in. Those are just minimums. They're not guarantees, just number one. But this does not have to come back to council. And I think the point that Tony made, because this is right around the corner from where I live, I know what Connecticut Avenue used to look like. I drove Connecticut Avenue. I drive those roads all the time. You want to know why? Because I like to stay the hell off of Holy Road, because it's crazy, right? So I stay off it, and I come in the back way. So I'm down there all the time. They clearcut every flipping tree down Connecticut Avenue, and they made just an unbelievably beautiful area, which I used to say looked like New England when I was driving down there. That's why I love the area so much, right? We were able to protect that. They came in there, did exactly that. Trees all came down. Every one of them came down. You come through that one section, which is still unincorporated Fall Creek Township, and it is just wide open. Boom, there you are, sunlight, no trees anywhere. You come through a beautiful wooded section, then it ends, it's done. I can tell you for a fact, one of the biggest things that I had when I talked to Paul Rio and Steve, and I talked to him at length, and I took Paul the task, standing out in the driveway over there on this thing, was that 113th Street, I want to remain as it is, because it is maybe the prettiest street that we have in the city of Fishers, bar none. You go down through there, the canopy is so nice, you get there during the fall, it's beautiful, you're going to have a park across the street, all the additional amenities. I can't tell you guys that the additional things that we've added into this PUD have been nothing but to enhance this project. I immediately got rid of the duplexes. Wrong spot for duplexes. That was a horrific idea. You know, I made a suggestion to make sure it was only one-story houses along Southeastern. Why? Because I wanted the neighbors across the street who have larger lots protected from, you know, what's going on over there. I understand that they bought larger lots for a reason, and I can't stop development from occurring, but I could try to make that development as beautiful as possible for you, and try to protect as much as possible. So that's what I asked a developer to do, no problem. You made the suggestion to make a gated community, to make that happen. I thought it was a terrific suggestion. They took it to heart and did that. Five to $800,000 houses are essentially custom homes. That's what they are, okay? That's what's going to be put in through there, okay? So please don't have, make a decision based on the fact that you don't believe that you won't have another bite at the apple, because you may not. You may not. It may not come back before here. It may just go right to TAC, and they're going to build houses, and they go clearcut trees. And I, for one, would hate to see that happen in that area. Just hate it, okay? I want to compliment Paul particularly, because, you know, when he and I sat out in that driveway, I mean, I grilled him pretty hard on a number of things that were going on out there. And the buffering was one, and being nice to neighbors is another, protecting that state residential to the west, and making sure we maintain the fence lines and all the tree coverings that were there, and continue to press and press and press and press, to try to make this project something that the neighbors out there, maybe not jump up and down about, but would be appreciative of in the long run. Because I can tell you for a fact, I don't believe you're going to be appreciative if we go in there and do a project that ends up looking like it does out Connecticut Avenue. You want to see things that just go in and clearcut and put houses wherever they can put them? That's what's going to end up happening, folks, I'm going to tell you right now. There's people watching this project, and they will come in there and gobble up that land. You want to know why? Because we're a great community. We're a AAA-rated, bond-rated community. We have great schools, we've got great infrastructure, we've got great amenities, you know, we've worked on with the mayor. So don't believe this just stops if we say no, okay? Don't believe that, because that's false, okay? And again, I can't compliment those guys enough, for me pressing them as hard as I did, and I did, to try to make this thing, this thing literally is around the corner from my house. I drive this road virtually every day. Every day, when I'm not speeding by Ann's house in my car, sorry, Ann, you know, kidding, but, you know, coming, either way, those are the ways I come. I know what's out there. I can tell you that, you know, some of the people aren't going to jump up and down, but I think the end product is going to be something that's going to be far nicer than a straight R2 zoning. That's all I got.
Thanks, Pete. Is there anybody else?
May I? Pete, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. And I'd also like to recognize, Mr. Rio, thank you. You have been very communicative and agreeable to what you heard that residents concerned and questions were, so I really appreciate that. The only thing I will say, as I'm processing the pros and cons, is simply to share with you, I am weighing this proposal and its potential to be an asset to our community, not just fulfilling the requirements, but being an asset to our community, and therefore, how does it offset any potential negative impacts? So that's where I am on that. And frankly, I do feel like, if we are not really thinking through the merits of this proposal, and not focusing on a kind of fictional worst-case scenario, if it's plotted, R2, we're not doing our responsibility here. So I just wanted to share that.
Thanks, Jocelyn. Is there anybody else? There's no public comment on this. For me personally, this is just a difficult, a difficult project. And I, and again, I just want to emphasize, I really appreciate that the petitioner came out and worked with everybody, but it just, for me personally, it's just, I would like to see something a little bit different, and it doesn't look like that's something that can be done at this time, and for the infrastructure reasons, and because that land, to me, is so special, I just, at this time, I'm just not able to make a decision in favor of this. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote.
Will you roll call, please?
Okay, we'll call vote on ordinance 051820B. Clerk, if you could go ahead and...
Cecilia Kobel?
Nay.
Sam DeLong?
Nay.
Brad DeRamer?
Nay.
David George?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Nay.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman? The nays have it.
The nays have it, okay.
Four to five.
Okay, motion does not pass. So with that, item 15, we will not be hearing item 15 on this, that's the voluntary accusation. So we will go on to item 16, with the regular items. Are there, is there any unfinished business or new business, Chris? No? Okay. Moving on then, we'll go to item 17, community comment at this time. If there's anyone from the public, I don't know if we have a list, but if there's anyone from the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Can you do three minutes?
Doug Allman, Fall Creek Township trustee. I didn't comment on this on the budget hearing, but I heard them discuss transportation and roads and that type of thing, and it's come to my attention recently that a person that bought some property right there off of Florida Road is going to put up a gate and build a bridge across Thorpe Creek, which, in the overall scheme of things, I've advocated for 126 going through. If a resident can buy property and put a bridge over Thorpe Creek, I think that the city of Fishers or a developer, somebody could, to extend that highway. Because there's always been a concern that that would cost too much, but a private resident is putting a bridge over Thorpe Creek at Florida Road, I understand, to access the rest of their property to build a home. I think somebody in government can do that and help that transportation need in that corridor. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment, and motion to adjourn by Pete. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by John, thank you. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.